Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Members of the Public. We welcome you to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Wednesday, November 6, 2024. We take note that a full complement of the Board is present. The Chief Executive Officer, County Council Executive Officer, and Sergeant-at-Arms are all here to assist. We'll begin today's Board meeting with the county's land acknowledgement. The County of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, Tautavium, Surrano, Kish, and Shumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Fernandino-Tatavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabrioleno-Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabrioleno-Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabrioleno Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit our website. Our invocation today will be led by Reverend Molly Vetter, Senior Pastor, Westwood United Methodist Church from the 3rd District, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ramon Navarez, Member Veterans Peer Access Network from the 4th District. If you are able, please stand.
Let us pray. I invite you to take a deep breath. Oh, Holy God, it was a long day yesterday, and so many of us were up late hitting refresh on our screens, watching closely the results of elections that matter. Today, we show up to do the work of the county, aware that a majority of voters in our county were disappointed by the results of a national election, but there were a lot of things on the ballot and a lot of work before us today. So we take some more deep breaths, and we ask that you would be with us in our grief, that you would hold our anxieties, and that you would be present with those feeling vulnerable today. Steal our resolve to do the work that's before us in a way that honors the values that have always been ours. In our tradition, we're called to care for the widow, and the orphan, and the stranger. All our faith traditions call us to values that seek not our own well-being, but the well-being of others. So give us wisdom as we do the work here, as we care for foster youth in our community, as we look out for the well-being of our immigrant neighbors and siblings and family, those documented and those without documents. Help us look out for the unhoused in our communities and keep hold of the big picture. There is a climate catastrophe before us that we cannot afford to ignore. So give us grace and compassion, and strength and wisdom, and enable us to use our agency as a county, as people faithful to this democracy, for the well-being of all. We pray this, trusting in the power of God of all creation. Amen.
Good morning. Please place, please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. If you're a veteran, you may render a salute and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank Reverend Molly Vetter for leading our invocation today and how moving it truly was. Thank you. Molly is passionate about building community, making the church more boldly welcoming and caring for our earth. She was appointed Senior Pastor of Westwood United Methodist Church in 2019. Before coming to Westwood, she served for several years as Lead Pastor of Redondo Beach First United Methodist Church, and for 11 years as an Associate Pastor at San Diego First United Methodist Church. Molly received her Masters of Divinity from Claremont School of Theology in 2001, and was commissioned as an Elder in 2001 and ordained in Full Connection in 2004. She's a Board Member of the General Board of Church and Society, and outside of her local church, she's enjoyed working with the district Junior High Camps and Strength for the Journey, a retreat for adults living with HIV/AIDS in San Diego County. For many years, she led a weekly Bible study at the San Diego Rescue Mission Women and Children's Center, and continues to conduct Bible study across other organizations and higher education institutions. Molly lives with her husband, Matthew Parker, and their son, Jonah. And I just want to thank her so much. Please join me in thanking her for all she does for our community and for being with us here today. Supervisor Hahn?
Is it on? Oh, now it is. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Ramon Navarez for leading us this morning in our Pledge of Allegiance. Ramon is a resident of Downey, but he graduated from Bellflower High School in 2008, and after graduation, he immediately enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. He was assigned to the Fleet Anti-Terrorism Security Team, where he supported Operations Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom from locations including Cuba, Jordan, Kuwait, and Djibouti. Djibouti, thank you. Djibouti. Following his time with FAST, which is the Fleet Anti-Terrorism Security Team, he was assigned to the 3rd Battalion, 7th Marines, and deployed to Helmand Province in Afghanistan, serving as an infantry machine gunner with India Company. After his deployment, he transitioned to a role as a military police officer. While in the service, he achieved the rank of Corporal and was awarded various medals, such as the Good Conduct Medal, the Global War on Terror Expedentuary Medal, and the National Defense Medal. Now, Ramon volunteers with the 42 Mike Mike Veterans Golf Outreach, and is employed with the Veterans Peer Access Network, VPAN, which helps with almost anything a veteran or their family member needs, such as housing, mental health, assistance, and benefits. Thank you, Ramon, for your service to our country. Thank you for your service here off the battlefield. We appreciate what you do. You're really making a difference in the lives of our veterans that we all love and support. So, on behalf of the County of Los Angeles, I wanted to give you just a little token of our appreciation today with this certificate of appreciation. Thank you.
Supervisor Barker, the floor is yours.
Yeah, and this one I'm not going to pick up. I want to introduce you all to this incredibly I want to introduce you all to this incredibly beautiful two-year-old German Shepherd named Amber. Amber is at our Agura Animal Care Center, was actually found in Malibu, and was brought in and is the sweetest dog. She sits, she is trained, no one came to claim her. She also loves to chase balls, and is just the most sweet, sweet, sweet dog. She is available for adoption. You can call the Agura Animal Care Center at 818-991-0071. Again, this is Amber looking for a forever home. I hope we can find her one. She's been at the shelter and truly is ready to go home and protect and just be your best friend. And now I want to turn your attention to the screen above us. Today's theme is German Shepherds. We've got Sophie, a five-year-old German Shepherd mix. She is sweet and would also make an incredible friend, and I have to say, I've had German Shepherds. They are smart, they are loyal, they are great with kids, they have an incredible temperament. She is partially blind, Sophia is partially blind. She needs a home that shows her extra love and care. If you want to bring Sophie home, call the Palmdale Center at 661-575-2888. And last but not least, I want to remind everyone of the Veterans Day promotion for spay and neuter services. This is specifically for veterans who live in the North County, including the unincorporated areas and the cities of Lancaster, Palmdale, Santa Clarita, and San Fernando. And if that's you, you can take your pets to the Simi Valley nonprofit Spay and Neuter Clinic for free services throughout the entire month of November. You can call 805-584-3823 and use the code words veteran, veteran when calling to make your appointment. Again, I'm introducing you to Amber here, two-year-old German Shepherd looking for a forever home. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, Amber.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to today's agenda. Executive Officer, please call our agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. Today's agenda will begin on Page 2, Consent Calendar, Board of Supervisors, Item 1 to 24. On Item 1, this includes an addition as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item 5, Supervisor Barker requests that this item be held. Also, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Items 9 and 10, Supervisor Solis requests that these items be held. On Item 10, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item 13, Supervisor Mitchell requests that this item be held. On Item 22, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. Also on this item, Supervisors Horvath and Han would like to revise their motion to remove Directors Number 3 and 5, and to update the remaining numbers and references to the motion's directives. On Item 24, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Page 21, Administrative Matters, Items 25 to 62. On Item 25, Supervisor Han requests that this item be held. On Item 26, for clarification, the agenda entry has been updated to reflect the location as Sun Valley. On Item 35, Supervisor Barker would like to be recorded as a no vote. On Item 37, Supervisor Horvath is recusing herself from the vote pursuant to Government Code Section 84308 because she received a contribution or contributions of more than $250 within the past 12 months from special services for groups who is a party participant or agent of a party or participant in the proceeding. On Item 50, Supervisor Mitchell would like to abstain from the vote. On Item 53, the Chief Probation Officer requests that this item be referred back to the department as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Page 46, this includes miscellaneous additions to the agenda, which were posted more than 72 hours in advance of the meeting as indicated on supplemental agenda. On Page 47, ordinances for introduction, Item 63 to 66. On Item 65, Supervisor Barker would like to be recorded as a no vote. On Page 50, separate matter, Item 67. Item 67 is a recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the Los Angeles Unified School District 2024-25 Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $250 million in execution and delivery of a note purchase contract. On Page 51, public hearing, Item 68, this item will be held for hearing. On Page 52, Special District Agenda, this is the agenda for the Regional Park and Open Space District. Notices of closed session. The Chief Executive Officer requests that Items CS1 and CS2, which were added on the supplemental agenda, be taken off calendar. The requests for refer back and to take items off calendar through CS2 are before you. That completes the reading of the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve these items. That will be the order. Executive Officer, please play our Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A Code of Conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the Board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the Board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the Board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the Board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with Board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the Board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and Board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the Board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant at Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Today, we'll begin with Item 5, followed by Items 9, 10, 13, and 25, and finishing with the public hearing, Item 68, followed by the remaining items not held by the Board and general public comment. Before we begin, Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on our agenda and explain the speaking rules.
For Members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call 877-226-8163 and use participant code number 1336503. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will have the opportunity to address the Board throughout the meeting. You will receive one minute to address the Board on items held by supervisors, one minute to address the public hearing item, and up to a total of three minutes on all remaining items and general public comment, for a total of six minutes for this meeting. Please note, once your time has expired, we will immediately move to the next speaker. Please monitor your time and the items you are signing up for, as your name will not be called once your time has elapsed. For Members of the public joining us remotely, when the Board moves to the item you wish to address, promptly press 1 then 0 to be moved from the listening queue to the speaking queue. Remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as the moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. You will need to press 1 then 0 for each item you would like to speak on. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so.
We'll begin with Item 5, Support for Governor Gavin Newsom's Expansion of the California Film and Television Tax Credit Program, which was held by Supervisor Barker. For Members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Supervisor Barker, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for considering this very critical motion, which I read in last week at the Board meeting. As we know, the entertainment industry is a driving force in our local economy. According to a recent study by Film LA, production in Los Angeles County fell by 19.7% in 2023 compared to the previous year. We've seen production leave our state and move to other states with better incentives, such as New York, Georgia, and even out of the country to the United Kingdom and Ontario. My district, which includes Glendale, Burbank, Universal City, and others, is home to many great studios of Los Angeles County, and the lack of production in these areas affects many small businesses in the area who support the entertainment sector. These include the mom-and-pop restaurants, caterers, dry cleaners, retailers, and so many more. In an effort to keep production in our state, the California Film and Television Tax Credit Program was launched in 2009 and has since generated over $26 billion in economic activity and supported over 197,000 crew jobs across the state. While the increase of this program is significant in the state budget, we must recognize that the substantial amount of dollars that it will generate in our region and beyond. The Board has voted to support the five-year extension of the Film and TV Tax Credit Program, and we must continue to build on that momentum. I'd like to thank Governor Newsom for announcing an exciting proposal to expand the tax credit program from $330 million to $750 million. I'd also like to thank Mayor Karen Bass for understanding this critical need for keeping production local and establishing the Entertainment Industry Council made up of industry leaders to inform solutions that will help revitalize the industry. I'm looking forward to partnering with her and the city to develop solutions that will benefit us as an entire region. And of course, thank you to Supervisor Mitchell for serving on the California Film Commission as Governor Newsom's new appointee and continuing to advance L.A. County's priorities. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for co-authoring this motion with me.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to co-author the motion. As we all know, Los Angeles is the global capital of our creative economy. This hallmark industry is a major cultural and economic driver in our region, and with our talent, creativity, and diversity, the industry tells compelling stories that help us understand ourselves and our world. This storytelling is also one of the largest industries by directly employing people as well as jobs and businesses that support the industry. Given the significance of film and television in our local economy, it is critical we make financial investments in this industry. As other jurisdictions across the globe provide tax credits, the governor's proposal to significantly increase tax credits to $750 million aligns with and signals the industry's importance and value. I applaud the governor for his leadership and wholeheartedly support this investment in our workers and our creative output, and we know this vital action, coupled with the county's investments in our Entertainment Business Interruption Fund as well as others, will help ensure Los Angeles County remains the beating heart of the creative economy. Thank you very much. I'll turn it to Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Supervisors Barker and Horvath, for bringing this forward. I was the governor's appointee on the California Film Commission for most of my time as a supervisor. I just stepped down recently and was glad to see that the governor appointed Supervisor Mitchell, but it was clear that most of what you do in, on the Film Commission is sort of rubber stamping the tax incentives, the tax credit program, just with what is available to you, and it was always very clear that it was a fix that could only be done in Sacramento, that Sacramento, our legislation, along with the governor, had to really look at increasing those tax credits for our film industry. And every year, we would get a report on the films and the TV shows that really benefited from the tax credits, and some very well-known TV shows remained in Los Angeles because of the tax credit, and some of our films were filmed here. And we constantly heard about the runaway film production scenario, where they were going elsewhere because other states provided better incentives, and it really does make a difference, so I'm really glad we're supporting this. And clearly, the entertainment industry is a cornerstone of L.A. County's economic development here. It's not just the, you know, the people in front of the camera or behind the camera. There are so many, you know, spin-off businesses that benefit every time there is a film shoot in one of our neighborhoods here in L.A. County. So thanks for bringing this forward. I think it's important. We want to see California invest even more in our film industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other supervisors, Executive Officer, please call the Members of the Public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Well, Joshua, Marin, Mora, please come forward, and staff will assist you. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address Item 5, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Our first participant is Eric Previn. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn, and, you know, obviously, so much for Ambassador Han. I was, anyway, the tax credits, you know, let me just say this. This is a discount for the studios facing a marketplace with other discounts, New York, Canada, Bulgaria. So the studios are greedy, not to be, of course, they're our treasurer partners. Where they are in terms of the civic-minded cultivating a workforce and keeping jobs here because they can and should is a great question, but instead, they're in this marketplace of one-night stands with jurisdictions. So one thing I don't like is you, all politicians, Krikorian, Bass, all of the supervisors praising the governor for handing out taxpayer money to the greedy-rich studios. Now, are they greedy and rich? That's a question. I don't know. Yes, they are. And do they crush unions? Hang on, let me ask. Yeah, they do. They've broken the spirit of Hollywood. So as much as I love our treasurer partners at the Olympics and NBC Universal...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the Board.
Thank you. We'll go to speakers in person. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Horvath and Supervisors. My name is Joshua Marin Mora. I'm a field representative for Assembly Member Rick Chavez Zabur, who represents California's 51st Assembly District. Assembly Member Zabur would like to express his appreciation to Chair Horvath and Supervisor Barker for their leadership in introducing this motion to support expanding California's film tax credit. As the Assembly Member representing Hollywood, Assembly Member Zabur understands that the California film industry is in crisis. Production in our state has decreased dramatically, and we're talking about an industry responsible for over $42 billion in wages and over 800,000 direct and indirect jobs across California, if we can keep them here, and many of these jobs are good union jobs that uplift families. Significantly increasing the film tax credit and making it competitive is a top priority for Assembly Member Zabur, as well as it would protect hundreds of thousands of California families and small businesses, and the Assembly Member respectfully urges the Board's support for this motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for his leadership, and congratulations on the win. I think that was our last comment, so Item 5 is before us. Moved by Supervisor Barker. I will second to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries 5 to 0.
We'll now move on to Item 9, Preventing Overdoses for Youth Engaging the Child Welfare System, which was held by Supervisor Solis. For Members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for joining me as co-author on the motion. Colleagues, as we are all too familiar, L.A. County is experiencing its worst substance abuse crisis in local history, with drug-related overdoses increasing from 2014 to 2022. I was encouraged to see this trend begin to plateau last year, but we are still losing too many, too many lives to too many overdoses, driven primarily by drugs like fentanyl and methamphetamine. This shows that our investments in prevention have been working, but we can and we have to do more, especially for our youth engaging in the child welfare system. DCFS and their partners play a pivotal role in identifying any and all risks associated with these vulnerable youth. Their children, social workers, are often the first line of outreach and prevention for families interacting with the child welfare system. These social workers are critical to ensuring the holistic needs of children, to see that their needs are met, including investigating allegations of neglect, abuse, while advocating for their safety. This includes substance use disorders, or SUDs, both for the children and their relatives, and it also includes identifying other behavioral health issues that may endanger a child's well-being. As they serve on the front lines of child safety, it is essential that they are empowered with the tools and training needed to look after a child's well-being. That's why I've introduced this motion with two main goals, prioritizing the training of DCFS... with the tools and training needed to look after a child's well-being. That's why I've introduced this motion with two main goals: prioritizing the training of DCFS and their partners on best practices to identify SUD issues and reverse overdoses. Secondly, working with the health departments to develop an accessible and streamlined assessment tool to identify behavioral health flags, including SUD and mental health issues that could risk the safety of these children. I know DCFS and DPH have launched a partnership called the Opioid Overdose Naxalon Administration Training, which has trained over 500 staff over the past two years. I want to see these efforts accelerated so we do not needlessly lose our children to the drug epidemic. And I also know that we at the county are very fortunate to have subject matter experts across our departments, including some of the preeminent minds in the health space in our health departments. I want to ensure that DCFS's experts are working hand-in-hand with them in a collaborative partnership, and that DCFS's processes are informed by the experts over at DPH, DMH, and DHS. And it's imperative that DCFS have access to necessary referral pathways and mobile response teams that the health departments currently have. Colleagues, like all of you, I'm committed to ensuring our departments are working together in partnership and not in separate silos. This is another step towards those efforts, and I'm hopeful that we will save the lives of many children. I respectfully ask for your aye vote. And Madam Chair Horvath, I know you want to speak on that.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Solis. I appreciate the opportunity to co-author this important motion. As we know, substance use disorder has ravaged our nation, and we continue to face the worst overdose crisis in national and local history, with research showing that 2/3 of people in the United States have been impacted by addiction in some way. It is particularly insidious when it affects our young people. Accidental overdoses of children in homes where an adult is using fentanyl has become increasingly common. The county has committed to reversing this crisis, investing in prevention, treatment, and harm reduction strategies, such as launching countywide initiatives like Reaching the 95%. This initiative focuses on better connecting the 95% of L.A. County residents who could benefit from substance use services but are not currently accessing them to available substance use treatment. While we have made progress, we clearly still have more to do, especially when it comes to ensuring our DCFS staff, resource families, and partners have the training they need to support our young people in the foster care system. This motion does just that, furthering the work DCFS has already begun in partnership with our Department of Public Health. Thank you again, Supervisor Solis, for identifying this gap in our system so we can ensure the safety of all our young people. Seeing no other supervisors in queue, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers to address the Board. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item nine, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Our first participant is Trimal Ritufo. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Trimal Raples, and I am with Justice for Youth. I would like to share our appreciation on behalf of item number nine. I wanted to thank Supervisor Solis and Lindsey Horvath for their motion to help prevent overdose for youth engaging in the child welfare system. You CFS and social workers and Justice for Youth are on the front lines of ensuring vulnerable youth are healthy and safe. This is why we support this motion, to ensure that these social workers are trained on best practices to prevent overdoses and identify any behavioral health red flags. I request the Board to support this important motion. Thank you so much, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Diego Rodriguez. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Diego Rodriguez, and I serve as the CEO of Alma, and I strongly support this item. I extend my gratitude to Supervisors Solis and Horvath for their proactive motion aimed at preventing and reversing overdoses among youth within the child welfare system. The CFS social workers are essential in protecting vulnerable youth, and research shows that training in overdose prevention and behavioral health enhances their ability to identify risks early. The National Association of Social Workers has also supported this crucial approach towards preventing substance-related tragedies. Preparedness and knowledge can mean the difference between life and death. With over 20 years of experience working with youth, and having endured the loss of a loved one to drugs in my own life, I recognize this critical need for this initiative and respectfully urge the Board to support this vital motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you for this one. Obviously, substance abuse is a very significant problem, and behavioral health is critically important, especially for this population. Foster youth is not often optional, and it's hard, but I think that the training of social workers is critically important. One thing I'm a little worried about is this Robert Kennedy Jr., part of the Trump operation. Is this, I think, all of the public health and all the employees need to pretty much prepare for the worst and go under the desk. This is a fiasco. He, this guy, I don't know, is Barbara Ferrer going to make a presentation to the Board today, by any chance? We were, the public was wondering if the public health, if today that's on the agenda or just DCFS and the substance abuse. I just want to thank the Board for shaking loose this very, very important acknowledgement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the Board.
Thank you. Are there any speakers in person? Seeing none, item nine is before us. Moved by Supervisor Solis, and I will second to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
We'll now move on to item 10, piloting Department of Public Health Directly Operated Substance Use Disorder Services, which was held by Supervisor Solis. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, as I mentioned for the prior motion, for the first time in decades, drug-related overdoses plateaued back in 2023. This was largely due to significant investments in substance use prevention, treatment, and harm, and reduction services provided throughout the county of Los Angeles. But despite these milestones, overdose mortalities continue to be a critical issue for our most vulnerable residents. Black people are disproportionately represented in overdose and poisoning death rates, and as we know, Latinos experience the highest numbers of fatalities. Meanwhile, on Skid Row, which is an epicenter of the homelessness crisis, it has the highest rate and number of overdoses mortalities, followed by MacArthur Park, both of which are in the first district. We know that in 2022, almost 60% of overdoses were attributed to fentanyl, a synthetic opioid that is incredibly dangerous. Yet overdose mortalities can be reduced with an adequate level of services. Medication for addiction treatment, known as MAT, is considered key in treating opioid use disorder. MAT reduces the negative effects of withdrawal symptoms and drug cravings and can prevent relapse when taken on an ongoing basis. The Department of Public Health has significantly expanded their contracted work, network to MAT providers, yet only an estimated 40% of contracted providers offer MAT. Having DPH employ field teams that provide substance use disorder, such as MAT, offers a critical opportunity in addressing those existing gaps that exist, and it would provide us with greater flexibility to deploy our own teams in areas in need, some of which I already mentioned. This is why this motion would direct the Department of Public Health, in coordination with the Department of Mental Health and Health Services, to identify existing gaps in substance use services, develop an action plan and timeline to pilot DPH Directly Operated Field-Based Substance Use Disorder Services within 12 months of passage of the motion. Such field-based services would prioritize communities like Skid Row and MacArthur Park, which are experiencing a disproportionate substance use and overdose, as well as continue to increase the number of DPH contracted providers that we sorely need. The motion also directs DPH and CEO to identify funding to support additional needed staff for the implementation of this pilot. And funding for opioids and funding, I believe, could come from opioid settlements, and Medi-Cal offers a unique opportunity to also enhance this work. So I believe there is a source of funding for us to help begin this process. So colleagues, I would respectfully ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you very much, and thank you Supervisor Solis for your previous motion and this one. I couldn't agree more in terms of the need. Appreciate you prioritizing those communities where we see the highest number of deaths. I did have a couple of questions, and I don't know if public health is going to be here or if the CEO can answer, or maybe you, Supervisor Solis. Given the pandemic level that we're experiencing, as you said, given the crisis, I'm just unclear if the most cost-efficient, quickest way to provide these services is to simply ask DPH to contract beyond the 40% of providers who currently provide MAT, just to increase the number of community providers who provide MAT, as opposed to waiting for the year for them to stand up a new program internally. You see what I'm saying? Because I know that, as the motion says, it's going to take a year. I understand DPH doesn't currently have field staff who do this work, so it's going to take the year of planning. Couldn't we just increase that 40% higher and get the services on the street more quickly?
It's a matter of two issues here, too, because there are providers that just aren't doing this, and we need more providers, and that's part of it. So there probably needs to be a parallel plan here so that we take those steps, because we can't always provide on, I mean, we can't always rely on providers. And so I think that's something that, for sure, we can talk with public health, but I think it's also a matter of resources, funding. So that's why I'm saying, let's tap into some funding resources so that we can actually make it feasible for providers to do this as well.
So I would appreciate if in the plan, if we could look at really kind of the cost-effectiveness, if there are providers that would take us beyond the 40% to do the work, as opposed to us really kind of standing up the internal, if there could be in your plan, the comparison, so we could figure out what would be more cost-efficient and what we could stand up faster.
Right.
So I would appreciate that, if that would be included.
CEO, do you?
So just for clarification, I understand the request just about process. As we work with DPH, do you want us to come back to you with a report back, or do you want us to just work with DPH? If funding is identified, have them immediately set about increasing the provider network who provides the services, and then also do a parallel where they try to establish the service delivery through employees? Is it a report back, or is it work with DPH to expand as fast as possible? I think it's work with them, and apparently what I'm being told is that DPH is also attempting to try to train providers, too, because providers are just not in this queue. And so there's a lot of work that has to be, yes.
They're already trying to expand the provider network.
Yes, and this would assist in that. So, yeah, I don't think, I think you can come back with. Yeah, so we will work with them, and we'll proceed down both paths. We will look to identify funding. Once that occurs, then we will support them in our efforts to train and expand their existing provider network, to get the services out the door faster, and then to potentially complement the service provider expansion through standing up internal service delivery.
Yeah, and let me just clarify. I'm not trying to slow this process down at all. It just seems to me that since the current experience is contracting out with providers, is to make sure that they have tapped into every provider that can do MAT, and if they need to provide the training to get more MAT.
That's what I'm being told.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that Supervisor Solis has asked that you find funding sources. That was going to be my other question. Is it going to hit NCC? Do we know? What does that look like?
Well, we're looking at opioid settlement funds and possibly- So we will look, we will look at the opioid settlement funds. I know that there's often a bunch of restrictions, but this seems like something that would be consistent, so we'll work with the department to develop a plan, as we do with all of our other opioid settlement plans. My understanding, it won't impact- And county council.
It will not impact NCC. So it will be funded, if you can't find opioid funds, it will be funded within public health some kind of way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Supervisor Solis for this motion. I have always supported having directly operated programs within our county departments. County of Los Angeles is certainly the largest employer in Southern California, so not only do we provide services to our residents, but we employ the residents to provide those services. And I support the idea of creating directly operated field-based teams to provide substance use disorder services to so many people who are out there struggling with drug addiction. We have directly operated field teams in other county departments, like our psychiatric mobile response teams and then our Department of Mental Health, that respond in person to people experiencing mental health crisis. So we know that field-based medicine is in high demand, especially for the unhoused population, and many of whom we know struggle with substance use disorders. So I think this pilot program is a good idea, because it will hopefully increase the availability of medication-assisted treatment in the field, and because it will create directly operated teams to provide these services. So I'm very curious to see how this pilot goes. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Solis for introducing this important motion. This past September, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention announced that for the first time in decades, there's been a drop in drug overdose deaths across the United States. However, California and Los Angeles County tell a different story. Statewide, the numbers reveal a slower drop. Los Angeles has had the highest number of deaths compared to other areas in the state for years, an issue that's disproportionately affected marginalized communities. This Board and the county overall have an obligation to protect the well-being and safety of all our residents, and particularly our most vulnerable. We have an obligation to ensure that substance use services are widely available and accessible at every contact. Substance use services and treatment work best when those seeking these services do so voluntarily. We can't make people want to get better, but we can be sure to provide support any time and every time we interact with them. We must engage and appropriately offer substance use services at every contact. This is especially important for our most vulnerable constituents living on our streets. And if we're going to make a dent in homelessness, we need to meet people where they are, literally, and offer the wraparound services they need, including substance use services and in particular, medication-assisted treatment, if needed. Our Department of Public Health, SANSI, has significantly expanded medication-assisted treatment, but if only 40% of contracted providers offer these services and treatment, it's clear much more needs to be done. DPH SANSI is the only health department that does not have directly operated services. Ensuring that SANSI has directly operated field-based SUD services will provide additional opportunities for engagement and can create opportunities to have further and deeper collaboration with other health departments. I want to thank you again, Supervisor Solis, for your dedication and focus on ensuring that gaps in our health systems are identified and addressed, and I look forward to the development of this pilot. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers to address the Board. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item 10, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Our first participant is Soma Snakeoil. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Soma Snakeoil. I am executive director and co-founder of The Sidewalk Project. I want to speak in support and strong support of item 10. I'm formerly opioid-dependent myself, and MAT and harm reduction saved my life. My team and I work in Skid Row and MacArthur Park, saving lives and distributing naloxone to drug users to save their own lives. We see a constant request for low-barrier MAT services. Thank you Supervisor Solis for the motion to pilot directly services to increase access to field teams that provide substance use disorder and medications for addiction treatment, in particular in areas of high need, such as Skid Row and MacArthur Park. I request the Board to support this motion. It is an important motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Reggie Clark. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yes, good morning. My name is Reggie Clark, Program Manager, Volunteers America, and I'd like to support item 10, and I want to thank Supervisor Solis for bringing this motion to the floor, because also to help them get in position to be housed at some point based on dealing with their barriers. So with that, I want to say thank you very much, and thank you for supporting Item 10.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jeremy Glower. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good morning. This is Jeremy Glower in support of Item 10. I am the PATH outreach coordinator in Spot 7, serving the communities in the Gateway area. For 40 years, PATH has done whatever it takes to help our neighbors exit homelessness, including treating our participants' substance use disorders. I can say with confidence that right now, there are thousands of people living outside struggling with addiction who want desperately to get clean. But the pain and trauma of living outside and the worrying increase in many drugs' lethality are enormous barriers to overcome. Our partners at DPH SANSI do lifesaving work. We would be relieved and honored to have them join us in the field. As Item 10 instructs, we thank Supervisor Solis for bringing this motion forward, and we ask for swift approval and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Brandon O'Connor. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
My name is Brandon O'Connell. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Vienna Star Human Services. I would like to speak in support of Item 10. I want to thank Supervisor Solis for her motion to pilot direct substance abuse disorder services to increase access to field teams that are providing substance use disorder treatment and MAT services, in particular, in areas of high need. I request that the board to support this important motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you, and thank you for this. And you know, this is why we need seasoned politicians like Solis and the others in there. Getting the opioid settlement balance, Davenport, great idea. That's exactly what that money can be used for, is this kind of thing. The question about whether or not we want to build out DPH on the brink of Armageddon is a great question. I, you know, I don't know, I don't understand providers that don't provide. That's a tough one for the folks out in the public. But one good spot, thinking of MacArthur Park for an overdose, followed by a very, very good pastrami sandwich, is Langer's. I don't know if you know that area, but that was a hotbed for politics. And I, did Getzko, was he restored to power? Or are we facing the former Ethics Commissioner Nathan Hoffman?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Stephanie Zapata. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Zapata. I'm the Executive Director of Project Resilience and also a substance abuse counselor who provides street outreach in the city of Pomona, where we offer the health to those who's struggling with substance abuse, offering them services, and Narcan, et cetera. And I just really want to highly support Item 10, and I want to also thank Supervisor Solis for her motion, you know, just to directly operate substance use disorders to increase, you know, the field teams. I want to share that there is a lack of field teams, and I've witnessed many individuals lose their lives due to the current opioid crisis. And I just really think this is an important thing to please go forward with. I also want to request the board to support this important motion. And thank you, Hilda Solis, for just standing up and being a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Maria Newell. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Maria Newell, and I'm an SEIU Local 721 rank-and-file leader, and as well as a former employee of the Antelope Valley Rehabilitation Center, ABRC. I'm here today to speak out in strong support of Supervisor Solis's motion and to build out our county directly operated systems of care for those that were burdened and still continue to be burdened by substance use challenges. As a former LA County Public Health employee and substance abuse counselor, you know, being a counselor and providing treatment, I am familiar with the struggles individuals faced as they attempted to achieve wellness and independence from substances. Our county jails, our mental health clinics, and our emergency rooms demonstrate the physical and emotional scars that are, you know, come from untreated addictive disorders. The motion before you today gives me great hope.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Michael Carrion. Your line is open. You're muted, if you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Michael Carrion. I am a substance abuse counselor with the Department of Public Health and a member of the SEIU 721. I'm speaking in support of Item 10. I've been with the county for over two decades working at the Antelope Valley Rehabilitation Centers, where we had over 500 therapeutic beds. I fought along with my fellow union members against the diversment of ABRCs, a heartbreaking move for the thousands of clients and alumni. Today, I am optimistic that the board will, in fact, turn the tides again and rebuild the infrastructure, specializing in substance abuse workforce, and expand the availability of medical assistance treatment for those in need. We fully support the county's work to deliver critical, needed field-based services. And I just like to add one thing.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Martice Cervantes. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Martice, are you there?
Martice Cervantes, your line is open.
Martice Cervantes, are you there? Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sean Morrissey. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, good morning. Sean Morrissey with Union Station and Homeless Services. I'm the VP of Advocacy and Community Engagement. I just really want to support this measure, and thank Supervisor Solis for bringing it forward. Like some of the folks who have spoken already, many of us are here today working in this field because of lifesaving services like this and because of MAT services, and I'm one of those. Our solutions need to be as diverse and varied as the individuals who need them, so I'm in support any time of real intentional harm reduction services, which not only reduce the harms associated with appetites or life choices that people are making, but more greatly reduce the harms that are visited upon them by broken systems. And this goes a long way toward helping repair a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Right, and seeing no speakers here, then I will say Item 10 is before us. Move by Supervisor Solis. I will second to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker? Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
We'll now move on to Item 13, ensuring the safe opening of mental health rehabilitation center beds at Martin Luther King Junior Medical Campus's Behavioral Health Center, which was held by Supervisor Mitchell. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Supervisor Mitchell, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you. I'm pleased to bring forward this motion that will allow the county to open 48 mental health rehabilitation center beds at the county's Behavioral Health Center located in the MLK Medical Campus, which houses a total of 96 mental health beds. These 48 beds will be, pardon me, locked beds that serve an acutely mentally ill population who may otherwise linger in jail or on the street. These beds help fill critical gaps in the county's mental health care continuum and advance "care first, jails last" objectives by providing step-down care options for individuals from acute psychiatric hospitals, state hospitals, and again, our county jails. The stakes are really high, as we know, and we really have to get this right. I'm aware that the county has concentrated many services to serve high-need populations on the MLK Medical Campus. These new services may put further strain on the community hospital's emergency room. And that's why this motion includes numerous oversight requirements, such as regular reporting of performance and quality of care outcomes, demographics, length of stay, and staffing levels, weekly visits, including unannounced site visits, semi-annual clinic audits, immediate reporting of any adverse incidents, pre-opening requirements, including staffing ratios, safety protocols, and emergency response and disaster preparation. I'll be watching very closely, because it is not my intention that we continue to put a strain on that emergency room based on services that the county is providing on that campus when we need to do our best to make sure that we're providing full, comprehensive services to those county residents who need them. It's critical that we are accountable to our communities and the patients we serve as we advance our "cares first, jails last" objective. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really glad to see this project is continuing to move forward. I definitely plan on supporting this. I'm really pleased that we're seeing these 48 locked subacute beds that will be coming online at the MLK Junior Medical Campus. And 32 of those beds will be specifically for the justice population. And I think while this is just one piece of the puzzle, expanding the number of locked subacute beds for the justice population will do just what we are all intending to do, which is to continue to reduce our jail population. And I think our biggest problem so far has been not enough places that are there so that we can redirect people to really get the care that they need. So again, glad that this is going forward. We're all going to be paying attention to make sure that this indeed does happen.
Thank you Supervisor Han. As we continue to prioritize depopulating our jails and bringing our unhoused community members experiencing mental health crises inside, we need mental health beds, especially subacute beds. And the shortage of beds prevents us from also implementing priorities such as closing Men's Central Jail and getting people the help they so desperately need. Adding 48 mental health rehabilitation center beds at the Behavioral Health Center at MLK is a win for the entire county and our residents. Thank you Supervisor Mitchell. I understand that this project has been a long time coming. I'm excited to see it come to fruition. I appreciate Supervisor Mitchell's leadership and partnership with the Department of Mental Health for increasing our behavioral health system of care. With that, Executive, oh, Supervisor Solis, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to also congratulate you Supervisor Mitchell for bringing this forward. I recall, I think it was in the previous year, visiting this facility and actually talking with staff. And, you know, we're also mindful of what it means in terms of our staff that are working there as well, that they're prepared, and they also get the support that they need. You have some incredible county staff employees who've been working there on this particular issue for many years, and they truly are our heroes as well. So I just want to lift them up as well and just continue to see more of these beds created around the county. We've done a similar village, as you know, at LA General, and we're going to continue to do that, too. So thank you.
With that, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers to address the board. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address Item 13, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, with that, Item 13 is before us. Move by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Han to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
We'll now move on to Item 25, 555 West Fifth Street, 350 South Figueroa Street, and 333 South Flower Street Acquisition, which was held by Supervisor Han. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now. Today, we are here to discuss and deliberate on a recommendation from our Chief Executive Officer to purchase the Gas Company Tower. Our offices have been briefed many times on the planning and progress related to this opportunity, and today is the day for us to have any questions answered relevant to the potential acquisition. So I've asked the CEO and her team to present recommendations contained in her board letter. But before turning it to her, I'd like to ask County Council to advise on parameters of our discussion today.
Thank you Supervisor, Madam Chair. Item 25 is on today's agenda for your board to consider the acquisition of the Gas Company Tower. Your board previously authorized the publication of the Notice of Intention to Purchase, which is what set November 6 as the date for the board to receive public comment and consider the acquisition itself. The county has entered into exclusive access and confidentiality agreements with the seller and related parties to enable the county to conduct its due diligence as to the conditions of the property, its facilities, and its suitability for county use. The information is subject to many confidentiality agreements, including the county's and the seller's appraisal reports and various estimates developed by county consultants for the seismic retrofit, life safety improvements, tenant improvements, deferred maintenance, as well as anticipated lease revenue from the Gas Company Tower and estimated operational costs. The confidential, this confidential access has enabled the county to look under the hood, if you will, to understand what it would be potentially acquiring to make an informed decision about the acquisition. Pursuant to the terms of the various agreements and legal restrictions, this information is confidential and proprietary and not subject to public disclosure until the property has been acquired. In addition, the county's due diligence reports are attorney work product privileged, and reports, the reports are also not subject to disclosure under the Public Records Act until and if and when the property has been acquired.
Madam CEO?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Board of Supervisors. Today, I am joined by five members of my staff. We have Mason Matthews, our Chief Budget and Financial Officer, Vanessa Moody, who's our Senior Manager over capital programs in the CEO's office, Joyce Chang, who's a Senior Manager with our Real Estate Division, Kelly Quinn, who's a manager in our Master Planning Division, and of course, John Cook, who's our County Asset Manager. And I have asked them to be here today to help answer any questions that your board may have about this very complex undertaking that has a lot of moving parts. As Supervisor Horvath stated, Item 25 is the CEO's board letter seeking your approval to authorize the county to execute a purchase and sell agreement for properties located at 555 West Fifth Street in Los Angeles, otherwise known as the Gas Company Tower, in addition to another property related to parking, and also take all the necessary actions to support the selling and acquisition. So why are we coming to the board with this recommendation? In a nutshell, we're coming to the board with this recommendation because it makes sense. It makes sense from a safety perspective, from an efficiency perspective, from a budgetary perspective, and also from a service delivery perspective. It presents an opportunity to reimagine how we can better serve constituents in the Hall of Administration and improve the experience of the employees who work here in the Hall of Administration. With regard to safety, your board previously directed my office and others to identify county buildings where seismic upgrades should be performed based on building characteristics such as non-ductile concrete buildings, as well as a plan to address these seismic issues. While that study is being completed, we know that there are a number of buildings in the downtown area in need of expensive seismic upgrades and other needed investments, including the County Hall of Administration, as well as the 313 Figueroa Building down the street from here, which houses the Department of Public Health, among others. The seismic work, even if we started today, would not be completed until 2030. Other buildings have issues with asbestos, with ADA compliance, and aging safety systems. Acquiring the Gas Company Tower will provide us a Class A building built about 30 years ago that meets more modern quote requirements. ago that meets more modern quote requirements for seismic, life safety, and is asbestos-free. With regard to efficiency, acquiring this tower will allow many county offices to consolidate their back-office operations into a single building. It would increase parking spaces in the downtown area by 46%. The Gas Company Tower is LEED GOAT certified, an energy-efficient building. The building is half a million square feet larger than the Hall of Administration, allowing us flexibility and lots of opportunities to address our space needs and to reduce our footprint in other aging buildings that are in poor conditions. With regard to the budgetary considerations, the cost to acquire the building as identified in the letter is $205 million. Acquiring the Gas Company Tower, as my team can illustrate, will save the county hundreds of millions of dollars, upwards to $1 billion, than what it would cost to complete the seismic renovations, life safety upgrades, and deferred maintenance on the Hall of Administration and other area buildings, funding which we have not yet identified or allocated to any fund. This figure does not include the cost to upgrade any other county buildings that may require seismic upgrades and that will be unaffected by the proposed acquisition of the building, of the Gas Company Tower. So, in other words, saving money here better positions the county to complete seismic upgrades and other needed repairs that we will likely have to do later. This plan does not call for the county's abandonment of the Grand Park area. This acquisition gives us space to reimagine the Hall of Administration, particularly the Board Hearing Room, and those departments that serve the public from this building, as well as your constituents who often come to board meetings seeking help. And then, one last word on the financing, which is spelled out in this board letter. On the issue of financing, the plan is to pull $72 million from five existing capital project funds, and then another $133 million from seven accounts, which we call provisional financing uses. These are funds that they already have an identified purpose. We would then refinance the building in order to return the money to the provisional financing uses accounts that the money was withdrawn from. We anticipate that we will be able to return this money by refinancing the Gas Company Tower in February of 2025. More detail regarding the components of the plan are included in the board letter. And I will conclude my comments there, and I will open it up for any questions or comments we may have from the board.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving more context to what is before us, more details for transparency, but this was held by Supervisor Han, so I want to turn it to her.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, none of you here are going to convince me that this is a good idea, and I know my remarks are not going to change anybody's opinion, but I need to say this, so if you will indulge me, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, a yes vote on this item authorizes the purchase of the Gas Company Tower. But we also must go into this open-eyed that a yes vote will be the start of a ripple effect that we may not be able to undo. Last month, when a similar item appeared on the agenda, I heard from some of my colleagues that you were confused about what we actually were doing, and you thought it was simply posting a notice to purchase a building. But this vote today sets the stage for the abandonment of the Hall of Administration. It is the first phase of a plan to move county employees out of and abandon this building and the Civic Center. I'm not sure the public knows this, and I'm not sure if the employees who work in this building know this, because most of this has been done behind closed doors. What's laid out today in this board letter is a plan to take $66 million of funding previously set aside for investments in this Hall of Administration, for the seismic retrofit, for the renovation of the seventh floor, for the replacement of the electrical system, and for other necessary work. So, once that money is transferred for the purchase of this skyscraper, there is no plan to replenish those funds. There will be no pathway forward for keeping this Hall of Administration open and keeping the county home here in the Civic Center. Our public buildings have meaning, not just to me, but to our employees who call these buildings home, and to the people who come to visit this building, to find justice, a common purpose, most of all, unity in our diverse county. Just want to read you a part of an email I received from a concerned resident and former staffer for another supervisor. Quote, "The Hall of Administration is part of a civic center that defines Los Angeles. The Civic Center is exactly what its name describes, a composition of buildings and public spaces with City Hall at one end and the Department of Water and Power at the other, both landmark structures, and Glory Molina Park in the middle. It is a tangible, physical expression of our desire for unity as a community of our history and our aspirations for the future. It is the symbol of our democracy. It is the gathering place where democracy happens." I went by the proposed building the other day, and I got to tell you, I feel like it's a soulless skyscraper, a building in the middle of a bunch of tall buildings, and I don't think that's what county government should look like. I don't think we need to be in a skyscraper. We need to be right here, close to the people. Glory Molina Park, which we just named, finally, is exactly where I think we should be. How many times have you strolled out in the park and seen county employees eating their lunch out there, looking at the fountain, collaborating, celebrating? You know, this building, the Hall of Administration, was designed by renowned black architect Paul Williams. Many of his buildings have historic designation. His work is appreciated around the world, and the homes he designed are sought after. And we should recognize the gem that we have here, and we should not take for granted and throw away our history for a short-term financial win. It started out as a real estate transaction, but it has turned into the beginning of the demise of this building, and I just want us to understand that. And by the way, there have been previous attempts to destroy buildings in the Civic Center. The beautiful City Hall at one point was ready to be destroyed because of seismic retrofitting challenges. The money was raised to restore our beautiful City Hall. Our own Hall of Justice was going to be destroyed because of seismic retrofitting. But again, calmer minds prevailed, and the money was raised to preserve those buildings. You know, also, just wanted to point out that this plan has not gone through the typical cluster process that is expected of board letters like this. Some of our staff were briefed, but no member of the public was made aware of this until October 8th, board meeting. And I just feel like, in all my years, this is one of the most closed-doors, off-the-wrecket plans to come to fruition that I have witnessed. I wish we could think bigger. I wish we could think about the future of the county and how the location of the seat of government impacts our relationships with our constituents. You know I'm going to vote no on this. I know I'm not changing anybody's opinion. I just want everybody to know, when they vote yes on this, what is actually taking place. It will be a series of dominoes falling down that we're not going to be able to get back. The money being used to pay for this purchase is being stolen from the funds that were meant to keep this building alive. We are robbing Peter to pay Paul, and I am sorry that this is happening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that I'm concerned also with the last discussion that we had on this item about looking at this plan in a parallel format, to see what we could do to preserve HOA, the portion of this open space here where we have our board meetings and board offices. And according to what I'm reading and my staff has told me is that there really isn't any plan, and that wouldn't happen for a while until all this acquisition is taken care of. So, I empathize and I hear what Supervisor Han is saying, because I do think that we have an obligation to continue to have and preserve open space, public space, in a body like this so that people can come. Obviously, this footprint would be a lot smaller, but I think we owe it to the public to have, at least in design, a parallel plan. And I know we've seen drafts of that, but I don't hear anything today about that, and that does concern me. And I know I may not change any minds either, but I do think that we have to be really, could I say, honest about where we're going and what that future's going to look like for the public. We have a metro center right between our building and City Hall, and all of that done was deliberately because of all the foot traffic and things that go on here. And we do have other buildings, I get that, that have to be retrofitted or maybe demolished, the court buildings and all the others that align right here in this space. But I do think that we need to be very open about it. And I, too, am surprised that we were not able to have a cluster meeting as we're starting to move in the direction of more transparency and accountability. I do think that we're going to hear more about that in the future from the public. And those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And Supervisor Han, I hear you loud and clear. I do appreciate, as you stated, that the issue did go to cluster. That's important, that there was an opportunity, and clusters are open to the public, so I don't know if any public was there, but at least structurally, that was a space where that was heard. I'll be supporting today's motion because I feel a deep obligation to the employees of the county and the general public. If we know this building is not seismically safe, then we have an obligation and a responsibility to take action. I asked at one point in closed session where this was discussed, how many people, you know, if we have a sense of how many people are in this building on a daily basis, that we would take responsibility for if they were on the side of the building that would collapse, if they couldn't access through, they couldn't exit safely through stairwells. I know the new building was built under new rules and regulations around seismic safety. I know that we, as the kind of the collective we as governing entities have held private industries and others accountable for buildings safer, and I think we have the same obligation to make sure that our employees and the public who come here are safe. So, does anybody, do you have an answer in terms of the number of people who are?
I believe we shared that approximately 4,000 county staff and employees are in the building.
All right. And in addition to that number, it would be members of the public as well.
Sorry. The 4,000 would include staff and public.
And public. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, Executive Officer, please call members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, while the public comments are coming forward, may I just take the opportunity to correct the record on a couple of things? So, first of all, real estate transactions are always confidential, and so the manner in which this transaction has been conducted and briefed many, many times with your board and the chiefs of staff in closed session is consistent with the confidentiality obligations under which we were working under. Two, I would say, with regard to a plan for the future, one of our time constraints here is lack of time. This opportunity will not last forever. We know that we will have to engage in a Civic Center master planning process, and that will be a public process. And then, with regard to the reference of funds being stolen, I just want to point out for the record that attached to the board letter, it indicates the capital projects and the provisional funding uses accounts from which the funds would be taken from in order to finance the acquisition, and then which we would then refinance the tower to replenish the money in the PFU accounts. Thank you.
Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Will Steve Alford please come forward, and staff will assist you? As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item 25, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Moderator?
Our first participant, our first participant is Mona Reddick. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may now begin. Ms. Reddick, your line is open.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mona Dallas Reddick. I'm phoning to speak in opposition to item 25. I urge the supervisors to retain the Kenneth Hon Hall of Administration as the seat of county government. This building has historic and architectural significance. Designed by noted black architect Paul R. Williams, it contributes a strong, elegant presence to the city center complex. Moreover, I question whether it wouldn't be far more financially sound to retrofit the present building rather than spend $200 million to purchase the gas tower, and then another $50 million or more for repairs and likely retrofitting of the new building, which was built several years before the Northridge earthquake. I must add that the public has not been adequately informed about this huge expenditure, and thanks Supervisor Han for opposing this item.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Susan Speth. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
My name is Susan Speth. I am a third-generation Californian, and Californian I represent a family deeply invested in maintaining history that we never forget, and in restoring historical structures like the Muller House Museum, Cabrillo Beach Bath House, and the Los Angeles Harbor Lighthouse. I'm calling to speak in opposition to item 25, and I thank Supervisor Han for also opposing this item. The county should not spend millions of dollars to purchase a skyscraper, and we should not abandon the Civic Center or our historical buildings like the Kenneth Hon Hall of Administration. Moving county employees and departments to a 50-store skyscraper would make LA County Government less accessible to the residents it is working for. I urge the county not to abandon the Civic Center and the Kenneth Hon Hall of Administration. I urge you to use those dollars to repair and restore these buildings, which will alleviate concerns regarding safety, and to vote no on item 25. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other participants queued up.
Okay, we'll go to speakers in person. Please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Steve Alford, and I am the current vending operator and the former snack bar operator at the Hall of Records Building. I would like to oppose this item because you don't have to be a genius. We clearly don't have the money for it. My space that I rent out, that I pay money to the county for every month, has not been painted in several decades, and the county's response is they don't have the money to do that, yet they have the money to purchase this building. It just doesn't make any sense, and my fellow food service operators, if we're being merged into a building, some of us are going to be put out of work. And overall, the Hall of Records Building is in far worse shape than the Hall of Administration. I know it needs to be retrofitted here, but Hall of Records has many ADA violations, including the elevators and the restrooms, and overall, it's just a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay. Item 25 is before us. Move by Supervisor Berger, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis? Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Hell, no.
Supervisor Han, no. Supervisor Berger?
Aye.
Supervisor Berger, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries four to one.
Okay. Executive Officer, please swear in members of the public who are requesting to address the board on our public hearing item.
Members of the public, including in-person and remote speakers, who are requesting to address the board on the public hearing items, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Please note that in the testimony you give before this board, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. You may be seated.
We're now on public hearing item 68. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 1 is a hearing on adoption of a resolution to revise the 2025 Hollywood Bowl season maximum and minimum ticket price schedule proposed by the Los Angeles Philharmonic Association. No departmental statement was provided, and correspondence was received.
All right. Is there a presentation, or can we go straight to questions? Wonderful. I'll go to Supervisor Berger first.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Norman, and to Phil for being here. I just have a few questions. Just to get a clarification, what is a process that's used to determine ticket prices at the Hollywood Bowl? the Hollywood Bowl? And what kind of analysis is done, and how do ticket prices compare to other comparable performance venues?
Thank you, Supervisor. And just first, I want to introduce myself, Norma Garcia Gonzalez, Director of LA County Parks. With me today, we have the LA Phil, and I'd like them to introduce themselves.
Good morning, Supervisor. Daniel Song, Chief Operating Officer of the LA Phil.
Good morning, Supervisors. Joe Carter, Senior Director of Sales and Customer Experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We take the analysis to look at ticket prices at LA County Parks very seriously. I know our partners would like us to be much faster, but we actually take several months to look at a process, and it's the same process that we use when determining, because we take it very seriously, any ticket price for our department. One, we look at, the LA Phil provides a whole portfolio of their proposed increased prices. Then our team internally looks at a couple of things. Looks at CPI, looks at comparable public facilities throughout the county and outside of the county, but I want to state "public facilities." We also look at access, this is basically very centered on access and equity, and we look at who's impacted with the ticket prices. We also, you know, look into account, like I mentioned, CPI and all other measures. And then we work very closely with the LA Phil to go back and forth regarding information. So it's a very lengthy process, but a similar process as we would determine any ticket price in LA County Parks.
And I think it's important to differ, how do you differentiate to the public between the lease events and then those run by the LA Phil?
And we, the lease events are not determined by this Board of Supervisors. As a matter of fact, they're independent lease events, and I can have Daniel Song, you know, explain a little bit more, but the LA Phil, which is requirements, and it's in our agreement between the county and the LA Phil, that there should be a minimum of 20 orchestra performances at the Hollywood Bowl. And we also determine, and I'll let Daniel Song determine or mention the lease events.
Yeah, that's essentially correct. You know, the, as a part of our lease with the county, our obligation to present the number of performances are also, have the same conditions in which we have ticket prices approved by this board. And so with the lease events, they are independent from that, and they set their own prices.
So, so those, like when we talk about the dollar, which is my next question, you know, we're offering the dollar tickets, that does not apply to lease events.
That is correct.
And, and to the, the free dollar tickets, how many were distributed last year? And then my second part of that question is, are you ensuring that it's countywide and that it's being provided in areas where they might not, individuals might otherwise have access to the Phil?
And that's a great question, Supervisor. Specifically in the last couple of years, we've really doubled down as a partnership, working very closely with your office, looking at equity and access. And there are three significant programs. The first is the free ticket programs, and the LA Phil, in partnership with LA County Parks, offers 72,000 free tickets annually. This is, there's no comparison to any other public performance venue that offers this amount of public, free public tickets. We don't stop there. In the last couple of years, we've also almost doubled the $1 tickets, and so now we offer over, you know, 44,000, closer to 46,000 $1 tickets, and in the two years, we've doubled that number. But we don't stop there. Two years ago, we came to this board and we said, "We're gonna go further," and we started the Hollywood Bowl Access Program. And we looked at two vulnerable target populations. One, seniors, and two, teenagers, and we collectively started the Hollywood Bowl Access Program. So we take every one of our teen centers in LA County, now 16, woo-woo, and we also bring all our senior programs, but we don't stop there. We also provide chaperones, because being welcomed and feeling like they belong also is a nurturing process. We have our staff that brings, bring our teens and our seniors to their seats. We partner with the LA County Parks Foundation to offer $5 ticket, I mean, $5 meals, so every teenager and senior gets a meal. And then, then also, we provide transportation.
But how do you make sure that it's, it's countywide? I mean, the numbers are phenomenal, and I know, Norma, that this is something that's near and dear to your heart in terms of access and equity, but I think it's important to, to explain how we are ensuring that that's taking place, and are there opportunities for us to expand that, to make sure that, that the equity issue is even, the cast, the net is cast wider?
And I'll start, and then I'll pass it over to Daniel, but we do look at data to look at demographics where we need to do more targeted outreach. And one good example, it's not just the Bowl, but the Ford. We had the AAPI community that had really low attendance, and then Supervisor Barker, the lowest attendance to the Ford was in your district. And so we specifically created targeted programming so that, and, and worked with your offices to target unincorporated areas that needed more outreach. So this is something that we also did. We worked with each of your board offices to look at unincorporated areas where we needed to do much more targeting to provide access programs. And I'll hand it over to Daniel.
Yeah, and so to further that, we also work with our partners throughout the county, and we have hundreds of organizations that we work with, to be able to work directly with them, make sure that the tickets are going to the areas in which they serve, and then thus serves all populations of the county.
Great, and, and so I appreciate that, and I really do applaud the partnership with the Phil. And I know Kim is in the audience, and I want to thank her. Welcome to LA County. This is your first, I think, hearing on ticket prices. Not to do with ticket prices, one of the issues that I've heard loud and clear from my constituents is regarding the traffic. And I am very, very proud of the work that you have done to do traffic mitigation. Can you outline the changes made as it relates to getting people in and out of the Bowl? I don't know, Daniel or?
I'll start, Daniel, then maybe I'll hand it off to you, but Supervisor, you, we've worked very closely with your office and the constituencies, because in addition to making sure that the Hollywood Bowl is an accessible and welcoming public performance venue, we also want to be a good neighbor and a good employer, and that's very important. And we've set out some, and we set out some really hefty goals, we worked with your office, that 30% of all riders need to be, need to take public transportation. Unheard of in performance venue. I won't take your thunder, Daniel, I'll let you share some of that data.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we took that challenge and we ran with it, and, you know, we're very proud that this year, you know, we've exceeded that goal. We're at 36%. One concert alone, Smooth Summer Jazz, had over half the audience, half the audience at the Hollywood Bowl came by our buses, which is astonishing. You know, traffic is, is dealt with in numerous ways, not just trying to bring people through mass transportation options, but really to configure the traffic in a way that would decrease the congestion and really allow people to get out of the Bowl in a safe and quick manner. To do that, we actually had to cut our arm off. We had to close two parking lots down and use them for quick and easy accesses for our buses in our park and ride. So we actually decreased the number of parking spaces available in order to be able to achieve this, and thus it created a greater good, so that people can get in and out of the Hollywood Bowl faster, the neighbors can deal with less congestion, and in fact, it would also improve just the environmental impact of the Hollywood Bowl.
Yeah, well, and I will tell you that, from the residents that are directly impacted, they've noticed a change, especially with the, the ride share pickup and drop off, and I appreciate the investment you are making, being good neighbors. I mean, the noise is gonna continue to, you're never gonna please everybody, and I recognize that, but I think it's important for us to continue to do those investments moving forward. And then, not for today, but I do think that we do need to sit down and better understand how we, and where we are, and I think Supervisor Mitchell is probably gonna touch on that, in terms of our bus and where we are offering it, because if we are doing the dollar tickets in areas that are countywide, we need to make sure that with those tickets, an opportunity for people to get into the Hollywood Bowl, and that's not insurmountable, and quite frankly, I think that's something that we should always look at, fine tuning each year, to see where we have the highest utilization and where we don't. So I just want to thank you all for the work you're doing, and I look forward to hearing from my colleagues. Thank you.
Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. When Angelenos from all walks of life have access to culturally diverse programming, our communities are better as a result of it. And access to affordable cultural experiences, especially in county venues, is a tenet of the county's Cultural Equity and Inclusion Initiative, an initiative brought to this board in 2016 by Supervisor Solis. And that initiative states that in the county's cultural policy, it was unanimously supported by the board, and it was also highly supported by the general community at that time. This includes a commitment to make county-owned and funded venues culturally diverse and representative of LA County, and I believe the county has a responsibility to lead by example. Our county venues have an obligation to ensure that all residents have a right to a voice and that programming actually reflects the diversity we all value in our county. My office has received a significant number of comments on this item, including concerns about cost and accessibility. I recently received a letter, for example, from the Florence Firestone Merchants Association mentioning that residents often can't attend Bowl events due to high ticket prices and transportation barriers. Our county's commitment to equity requires that we meet our residents where they are and provide opportunities for those from hardly reached communities to access our county's cultural assets. This includes, from my perspective, providing accessible transportation options for residents to and from the Bowl, and we should be using ridership data to determine where to target outreach and ensure that residents in hardly reached communities have both a way to get to the Bowl and affordable ticket options. And as good stewards of our cultural assets and gathering spaces, I'd like to see a plan to ensure that the cultural relevance of the programming offered at the Bowl appeals to a diversity of county residents. Recently had the pleasure of meeting with the Phil's new CEO. Thank you again for coming today, and I appreciate her willingness to work with my team to ensure that the Bowl equitably benefits all Angelenos while tackling the challenge of rising costs. The LA Phil has committed to providing an annual report on its efforts and progress towards equitably providing affordable tickets and accessible transportation. Let me, let me say that I understand that there was some confusion about, A, my position, what I was gonna say or do today, a motion I brought forward, and the confusion was either real or manufactured, I'm not sure which. So let me address some of the issues that were brought to my attention. The first is that the board is, one of the issues or questions brought forward was that the board is trying to tell performing artists how and what art they can produce. No, my request asks that the Philharmonic, as a presenter, to share information that can help the board better understand whether our constituents find Bowl programming to be culturally relevant. Second, we heard a concern that the county is attempting to regulate a private venue. I think it's been made clear here by county personnel that the Bowl is indeed a county asset, not a private asset. And while the Phil has an operating lease with the county to use this venue, the county still has certain obligations to regulate its use. And I think perhaps one of the most disturbing to me, and maybe I'm a little sensitive today given the racist, anti-immigrant rhetoric we've heard on our national airwaves these last several weeks, and I don't know if other offices get emails that attempt to help you define what equity and diversity looks like, maybe it's just me, I don't know, but to get an email that says, and I quote, "LA Phil has a youth orchestra, LA School in Inglewood, so the LA Phil is already doing equity and diversity." So while I'm a very strong supporter of Yola and what Maestro Dudamel's vision was in terms of educating the next generation of young, future LA Phil artists, many of whom are of color, that has nothing to do with the conversation today. It has nothing to do with how we make sure that programming is offered in the most culturally, ethnically diverse county in the country, that merely looking at Yola and thinking that that's doing diversity is not adequate. So I appreciate the conversation, the willingness to share the data, just so we can have the data to make sure that we are clear about whether or not communities' needs are being met. Finally, I'll just say with regard to park and ride, and that was great news and great success. I wish many of our other large venues were doing more of the same, frankly. But again, I also look forward to seeing the plan for increasing ridership for the park and ride service at Magic Johnson Park. It is the only Bowl transportation service located in South Los Angeles, and that's a critical part of our effort, again, to address accessibility issues. Measurable objectives should reflect what is needed and feasible in terms of achieving higher readership, ridership levels. So I will vote today to approve this request to change ticket prices. Again, I look forward to the data to help us understand and perhaps guide the Phil in future programming decisions, and I look forward to ensuring that the Bowl's programs are responsive to the needs of every Angeleno in their future programming years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for sharing that. Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, and I want to thank Norma Garcia, Parks and Rec Director, and LA Phil folks here, and folks that are in the audience. I, since starting on the board, most 10 years now, I had never really had experience at the Phil. Someone who grew up here their entire life, whatever, until I became a part of the board. And since that time, I've come to appreciate and have put forward motions, because exactly to the point that we do have to invest in our communities culturally and also making an effort to really harvest and invest in our community is, is the utmost importance for me, where I, what I believe I represent, and what people have entrusted me to do on the board. So I'm, first of all, want to say thank you for the change, changes that have happened since I started, because I see a much more fruitful value and appreciation of our diversity, but can we do better? Yes, we can. And I know that you have attempted to do what you can, but I do understand how, how the county operates. When you have a lease agreement with a foundation or a group that has to raise money and attract artists to come and perform, that costs a lot of money, just as I also sit on the Pomona Fairplex. They have a foundation that runs their entertainment, concerts, and what have you. I would love to tell them who I would like to hear and play there, but that's not up to me. That's a decision that, that folks make there, but they understand, and I think, much like your board, has come to understand that there's more to be gained by expanding that broad net and inviting other entertainers, performers, to also come and be a part of these venues. But what's most important is who has access, and so I do believe that we can do a better job in the coming year, perhaps, to collect that data so we know where our gaps are, if there are any, and if we're doing a great job, great, let's build on that. But I know that there are some gaps. I know in my own district, we have, we have attempted to work with the Phil, and we, my staff has been able to work with you all at a local level to see how we could engage our seniors and our teens, and I've seen them. I've actually been at senior center events where tickets have been given out to seniors in Basset. Folks out there, I don't think ever, ever came to the Phil, so that was mind-blowing for them. And just think what that impact says to them, but there's so much more out there, even farther east in my district, like Pomona, Azusa, and those places. So I want to, I want to continue to work with you and to hopefully have a space that the LA Phil will invest in, because at one time, there was a space for you at Cal State LA, and for some reason, that leasing agreement didn't work out, that hap, that lapsed now for some time, but that's always been my priority, to see that we bring something back. So I would like to work with you, work forward to see how we can do that, so that all of our districts have some element of, of the Phil there, and especially with Yola. I, you know, I, I kind of, I understand what you're saying, Supervisor Mitchell, but I... but I also know that an investment in Yola pays off. And you see it, and we see it. We see it in our community, we see it at our high schools. I know in East LA, we have several of my high schools that are performers, and they perform not just here, but in Sacramento, and perform for the First Lady. Those things are going to be memorable and are going to have an impact on their families, and it does. And I want to see more of that enrichment placed in, for example, my district. Not just in unincorporated areas, but as far out in the East San Gabriel Valley, where those folks also want to have access. They don't all are able to come down to the Phil because of bus access and limited metro, because we don't have metro lines that go all the way out there. So I would ask us to also look at that. But know that I am fond of what you all are doing. I am saddened too when I hear that Dudamel's going to be leaving and going to New York. I saw him the other night at performance that he did for Dia de los Muertos, which was fabulous. These things don't often come about. And just in the last few years, we've been able to see those changes. So, you know, I want to commend you because those kinds of activities really do open up a whole new experience for our communities and new patrons. Because I know if our folks see what is available to them, that they will also be future patrons. So I just want to end with that, and thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the discussion on this item. This is something that happens regularly, where we're asked to raise the ticket prices. But there's a lot of good discussion about a lot of other things that go into what happens at our Hollywood Bowl. And we're so lucky to have our LA Phil be our signature in-residence orchestra and partner. We are so lucky to have them. They are such a wonderful, diverse group of musicians that really, anytime you get to hear them, people are so thrilled. I think it's important, anytime we talk about raising these ticket prices, it's always good. And thank you for kind of leading with that, Norma, about how many inexpensive tickets we... Not only have we kept, but you have doubled. That is really what matters, because the experience of the Hollywood Bowl is like none other. When people come to visit, most people want to take out-of-town visitors to the Hollywood Bowl. There's just no other venue like it, out there, under the stars. The acoustics being so amazing. I saw the Beatles there twice when they came. I was a small child, but I remember it vividly. So it is a great venue. One of the things I agree with, you know, one of the most incredible performances, right after I became a supervisor, you know, I was on this mission to kind of bring the Phil to the community. Because as we've talked about a lot, it's very difficult for some of our outlining cities to make it with traffic and everything to the Hollywood Bowl. But the Philharmonic came to Whittier and did a spectacular concert. And there were people there that I know had never, ever made it downtown to the Music Center, to the Hollywood Bowl, and they were so enthralled, and really, kind of a life-changing moment for them to hear the Phil in a school auditorium. So there is so much that matters with bringing our community to the culture, bringing the culture to our communities. But I just wanted to say, you know, I'm obviously supportive in what we have to do today, but just wanted to highlight, it's not... It may be a stretch on this item, but, you know, our southeast LA community has felt this for so long, and that is why they have a vision, a dream, to have a cultural center, Sela Cultural Center in southeast Los Angeles. It is their premier dream and vision. The Philharmonic, LA Phil, has been a partner in that effort and has already pledged to be a huge part of helping us to program there, maybe helping us raise the awareness of why a cultural center like that in southeast LA matters. But this discussion really lends itself to, we need to make as many investments as we can in our communities so that if they can't get somewhere, we're going to bring it to them. And southeast LA, as you know, Hilda has never had that space for, not only to experience other artists and musicians, but to, you know, highlight their own budding artists and musicians in their community. And this space will be that. And this discussion makes me realize how urgent it is that we continue to do projects like that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I support all of the comments made about expanding, you know, the Phil's presence in other geographic areas. So I hope you all will find value in the data that I'm asking for the Phil, because it's not just being there physically, but what program is being offered when we go to these diverse communities. That's my whole point about the nature of the programming. So yeah, we expand where they are, and we make sure that the programming is relevant to the communities that they'll be moving into. Thank you.
Yes, the Hollywood Bowl is an iconic cultural landmark that plays a vital role in Los Angeles County's arts and entertainment scene. And this past season, over a million people came to enjoy music and cultural programming at the stunning outdoor setting. All 24,000 $1 seats were sold this season, and the LA Phil even expanded the program by adding 10,000 additional $1 seats for six targeted performances. I know our offices appreciate the partnership with the LA Phil. In particular, the community programming tickets they provide, and we get great feedback from our constituents in District III. Each season, our office is able to make direct calls to community-based organizations, civic leaders, and volunteer groups throughout the Third District. And we distribute the tickets that our offices allocated by mail, in which we include information about the Bowl's Park and Ride program. I was also pleased to see the Bowl's commitment to encourage more people to utilize their Park and Ride program. Thank you for those investments. And we know shuttle and ridership increased 7% to an average of 36% over 400,000 riders. Our office has been working with the Bowl to identify potential options to bring greater connectivity from the San Fernando Valley to the Bowl, and we hope to bring something online for the coming season. And I understand the unique challenge of balancing operational and market demands with access and affordability. I look forward to learning more about how Parks, the Parks Department, the LA Phil, will work to accomplish these goals. I look forward to the data that we will receive. And I appreciate sharing the comments that are district-specific and, you know, that have come to each office to peel back the curtain a little bit for us in the Third District. You know, we were home to many of the arts and culture assets of the county, and we were very sad to have redistricting split up those assets. But I do believe that a benefit of that is that all of our offices share in the responsibility of these various assets and that we get to inform operational equity and access and what that truly means for all of our communities. The benefit of change is revisiting long-embedded practices and seeing if they make sense today. And I know that in our office, when we had made... As we were looking at our District III specific funding, we looked at the investments that the district made because we had LACMA, Tar Pits, Hollywood Bowl, Ford Theater, to name a few. Specifically for the Hollywood Bowl, the Third District historically provided $455,000 in discretionary funding for Hollywood Bowl shuttle service that was regional, not just specific to our district, because that asset was in the Third District. And so as we're thinking about what equity means and thinking about these venues as county venues, we should be thinking about, as a county, how we want to service them. In the past, it has been reliant on the districts in which these venues reside. And if we're not going to continue that practice, then I think we need to have a conversation around that, because it's clear that equity and access is important to this entire board, and most importantly, important to all of our constituents. So I just wanted to raise that as we're thinking about, you know, how we make equity and access more real for Angelenos. Supervisor Barker.
Yeah, you just reminded me of something, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that. I mean, we're talking Hollywood Bowl, with the Philharmonic, you know, with Disney Hall, and even the Music Center, with the opera and all. I think that if we're going to be looking at access and accessibility, it shouldn't just be focused at the Hollywood Bowl, which obviously is an incredible venue. But we have an opportunity, I know, even with the opera, to expose a new generation to what we have to offer here in LA County. So I hope that we'll take this and take it a step further and work with Rachel Moore on how we can better align our vision as a board with other venues and other operators that are currently using our facilities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
With Charles Dickerson, Emmanuel Maxwell, Kim Noltemi, and Tamika Washington, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Moderator?
Yeah, the moderator sounds very far back. I can hear it. Did you hear him?
We didn't, but go ahead, Mr. Preben.
The moderator sounded barely audible, but FYI, okay. So first of all, yeah, cultural assets like the Hollywood Bowl are great. I've been twice recently, but they were for these leased events, which cost a bloody fortune, okay? So if the county wants to really spread the love and share the culture, the $1 seat certificate, 24,000 overseas, that is not impressive, to be fair. They should be for all concerts. And the other thing is, why not have some free concerts? Put up five slots and say, who big names want to play a big free concert for the residents of the county, okay? And Park and Ride is great, kudos to that. But that is not what I would call exclusive public transportation. It's $28 for your family of four, so it's not that miraculous. Though it is impressive, and it's very impressive that you took away parking spaces to make it more efficient. Efficiency is important. And I would just say this, good luck riding to the Hollywood Bowl from Santa Monica in public transportation. No further questions, Your Honor, but make it open and free for everyone.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Rivetta Bowers. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you so much. I first went to the Hollywood Bowl for my fifth birthday. I'm now 76 years old, on the Hollywood Bowl, on the LA Philharmonic Board, and serve as vice-chair of that board. I joined the board seven years ago to work on the Yola program and to work on the Learning and Community Committee. Cultural relevance has been a part of my career for the last 50 years. I was a head of school in the same school for 46 years. And I know that investing in youth and the Yola program is a way to not only diversify future audiences and future performance, but also to bring music into communities that is culturally relevant and important for all students to have access to and to learn. We value your stewardship.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Antonia Hernandez. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Antonia Hernandez, and I'm a member of the board of the LA Phil. I want to thank the supervisors for the support of the Phil. I joined the Phil board three years ago, and I can attest that diversity and equity has been an issue that has been discussed. In fact, I brought in a panel to talk about Sela and the possibility of a center in southeast LA. And I am more than happy to meet with the supervisors to further discuss how we can work together to make the LA Phil much more accessible and relevant to the residents of the county of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Carleen Davis. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Carleen Davis, and I'm a 58-year-old lifelong Angelino and second district of our district resident. And I want to commend Supervisor Holly Mitchell for her advocacy towards ensuring equity and access to one of the county's most phenomenal cultural treasures, the Hollywood Bowl. And I'm speaking today as co-founder of Sisters Aging with Grace and Elegance on behalf of older adults in Los Angeles County. There are 2 million older adults in Los Angeles County, over 500,000 of whom live ever below the poverty level, and nearly 40% of whom don't have enough income to meet basic needs, and a majority of whom are Black or from other communities of color. And so this is a population for whom having access to the Hollywood Bowl can serve as an intervention to mitigate the impact of loneliness and social isolation. And so as I reiterate my support for racial, ethnic, economic, geographic, ability specificity, and transparency in the ways in which the Phil ensures equity and access, I want to close out with this quote from...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is David Ford. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yes, my name is Dave Ford. I am on the board of the LA Phil and was previous chair of the Ford Theater. I have been going to the Hollywood Bowl and other venues of the LA Phil for several years and have enjoyed every time I see the diversity of people and performances at these venues. I'm reaching out to you to share my support for the LA Phil board and the Hollywood Bowl. I appreciate the Yola Center and the location where it is being built, the Ford Theater, Disney Hall, and the Hollywood Bowl. The Hollywood Bowl is an incredible asset to the people of Los Angeles, and I hope you continue to support the LA Phil by managing this special part of this community. We have an opportunity here to really embrace the diversity of Los Angeles with these venues. And I hope that today your vote...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Randy Tahara. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
My name is Randy Tahara, and I'm a commissioner on the LA County Arts Commission, although the views I express today are my own. I wish to thank Supervisor Mitchell and her staff, as well as Supervisor Barker, for advocating for transparency and comprehensive data and working in partnership with the LA Phil, which will assist in setting goals to attract a diverse audience at the Hollywood Bowl, a true gem of the county. While strides have been taken to increase access, we can always do more to ensure equity. As a subscriber to the Bowl, as well as to the Walt Disney Concert Hall, I am also thankful to the Phil for their renewed commitment to equity and diversity in programming, audience development, and youth engagement, especially with their work with Yola. Today, more than ever, measures must be taken to ensure that all residents of the county feel welcomed and can enjoy its cultural assets. Thank you Supervisor Mitchell for ensuring that county-wide assets can be accessed by all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Pamela Bright Moon. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Pamela Bright Moon. I am also an art commissioner representing the Second District, but my comments are my own. I'd like to thank Supervisor Mitchell and Barker for working with the LA Phil to make Hollywood Bowl events more affordable, accessible, and culturally relevant. I have attended many concerts at the Bowl through the years. My youngest son also worked at the Hollywood Bowl for many summers as a parking attendant. But as I travel in the district, particularly in South LA and the unincorporated areas, with the exception of the Jazz Festival, there is a lack of interest, and that needs to be corrected. As an art commissioner and business owner in Inglewood, down the street from Yola, I would be happy to work with the Phil as an ambassador to help create a plan with specific and measurable objectives to make opportunities affordable, accessible, and culturally relevant to all Angelenos.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Lisa Clary Reale. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Lisa Clary Reale. I'm a resident of Los Angeles. I'd like to thank Supervisor Mitchell for working with the Phil to make the Bowl events more accessible and more affordable. I attend the Bowl every year, along with my son and daughter, who started attending when they were children. They are now adults. I consider it one of LA's greatest treasures. It's magical, and yet I'm painfully aware that there are... This is a tragedy that must be rectified because the Bowl is a public venue, and its priority should be the public, and that should be everyone in the public, not just a select few. So it's really critical that the L.A. Phil create and implement a plan to make ticket and transportation data available, and a plan that has really specific targets and goals that can be measured. The L.A. Phil is a cultural leader in L.A. County, but it must also be a civic leader.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jenny Cuita. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, I'm calling on behalf of Koreatown Youth and Community Center, KYCC. I'd like to thank Supervisor Mitchell for working with the L.A. Phil to make the Hollywood Bowl events more affordable and culturally relevant. In 2023, KYCC served over 12,500 individuals, 96% who are designated as low-income and extremely low-income. Many of our families is paycheck to paycheck and face issues of being able to afford and access culturally relevant events at the Hollywood Bowl. And we hope that the Hollywood Bowl and L.A. Phil will follow through on their commitment to make ticket and transportation data publicly available. This will go a long way in making sure that these venues are both affordable and accessible and making L.A. County really thrive culturally and in an inclusive and equitable way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Esther Adine. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Esther. I wanted to thank all the Supervisors, but especially Supervisor Mitchell, for looking out for all of our kids, all of our communities, to make everything diverse and really challenge ourselves to be more programmatically diverse and make it easy for people to get there. As a mom at a Title I school, where we sell a lot of chocolate to try and get kids to go on one cultural trip a year, the value is huge. I am able to take my kids separate, but many of these children, it's their only opportunity. And probably the most significant program of the year that we have at campus is Festivals of the World, where all of the parents come, the community comes, and the kids come, and we highlight all of the diversity at our school. And I was just thinking about this, I had a PTO this meeting, that this Board is having a very similar conversation today. How can we just do better, be better?
Thank you. Your time has expired.
The most...
We're going to speakers in person. Please go ahead.
Good day. My name is Charles Dickerson, and I am the founder and executive director and conductor of the Inner City Youth Orchestra of Los Angeles. We are proud partners with the Los Angeles Philharmonic, particularly the Yola program in Inglewood. We partner with them on several different ideas and things. I really want to speak quickly about the history of the Hollywood Bowl and the fact that the Hollywood Bowl has been a place where particularly African-Americans have expanded their arts opportunities throughout the years. Many of you may know that it was in 1936 that William Grant Still was the first African-American in the United States, or I think the world, to conduct any major orchestra, and it was the L.A. Phil at the Hollywood Bowl. That's an important point to realize that the Phil is doing its part. There seems to be a culture change, and it's a positive culture change. We hope that that change will continue with the new CEO to open the doors and make sure...
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Kim Noltemi. I'm the new, as you've heard, CEO of the L.A. Phil. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak and for all of the hard work you do for the county day after day. We're grateful that you trust us with the stewardship of the Hollywood Bowl, which is one of the county's iconic parks and concert venues. I'm here as the leader of the organization to ensure that you know that we are all committed to working with all of you to ensure equitable access to all of our concerts and educational activities. We are open to your ideas and dialogue about how we can be better. That's the theme today, how can we all be better? And we can improve our work at the Bowl to reach as many of your constituents as possible and as many people throughout the county. We're committed to transparency and providing any data requests that you have, and I look forward to working with you all in the upcoming years.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Emmanuel Maxwell. I am the Chief Talent and Equity Officer at the L.A. Phil. I'm here to read a statement from our esteemed music and artistic director, Gustavo Dudamel. "The Hollywood Bowl changed my life. It is where I made my U.S. debut nearly 20 years ago, and it has become, in my view, one of the most important venues in the world because of the diversity of our programming and our audiences. We are thoughtful in our inclusion work, aiming to offer something for every Angelino. Only at the Hollywood Bowl can I lead an orchestra in performances of classical music, Mexican alt-rock, West Coast hip-hop, bebop jazz standards, and popular film scores. But no matter the genre, the L.A. Phil's goal remains the same: to provide access to the joy and community available to us through music." And again, that's from Gustavo.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Tamika Washington Miller. I'm the Associate Director for Lula Washington Dance Theater, and I want to say thank you and applaud you all for the wonderful work you're having. This conversation about the arts in Los Angeles is so important. First, I would like to let you know that as an artist, I can barely afford to go. I have to think very long and hard about how I'm going to be able to attend performances there. My first opportunity at the Hollywood Bowl was because McCoy Tyner invited Lula Washington to choreograph and be on the show. My second time at the Hollywood Bowl was because Terrence Blanchard invited Lula Washington to choreograph for his show. I am suggesting that there's more that can be done, especially by partnering and getting deeper collaborations and partnerships with the performing arts and cultural leaders and anchors that are here right now, existing today, who groom and prepare the leaders that come into your spaces at the L.A. Phil and the Hollywood Bowl. I thank you, and I hope that you keep digging deep. Get in touch with those of us who have boots on the ground, and let us help to participate in the growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Erwin Washington. I'm the co-founder of the Lula Washington Dance Theater. That was my daughter who just talked. The Hollywood Bowl has done some incredible programming, but I also understand the costs you face, because we face them as a small dance company, and you have to raise more money to afford your programming. What I would hope you would do when you do your increased pricing is continue to develop ways to let the lower-income people come to your shows and participate in your shows. You also program the Ford, and our dance company's going to dance at the Ford in August. And when you do things like that, you open up what you have to offer to the lower-income people.
Thank you. We'll now go back to speakers on the phone. Moderator, please present the next speaker.
Our next participant is Finley Kaper. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Finley Kaper. I work for Arts for L.A., and Arts for L.A. is grateful to Supervisor Mitchell for working with the L.A. Philharmonic to make Hollywood Bowl events more affordable, accessible, and culturally relevant. I will say, as a young person in L.A. whose community is young artists, economic barriers are really a big issue in accessing culturally relevant events in L.A. County. It's critical that the L.A. Phil follows through on its commitment to Supervisor Mitchell to make ticket and transportation data publicly available. A plan with specific and measurable objectives to make these opportunities affordable, accessible, and culturally relevant to all Angelinos is critical to fulfilling this promise. The L.A. Phil will immense cultural influence in L.A. County and is responsible to be a leader in the advancement of cultural equity and inclusivity. Passports have gone to great lengths to ensure that the Bowl sets a new standard for affordability and accessibility, especially when private venues make it difficult for many Angelinos to share in the benefits of quality cultural experiences. Ensuring that the tickets and transportation are both affordable and accessible is an important part of making it...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Trevor Davis. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yes, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm Executive Director of Reach for Community, a nonprofit dedicated to articulating and advancing the field of arts-based social work. Previously co-chair of Arts and Culture Empowerment Congress of Arts and Culture in the Second District. So I just, as an advocate for a long time, I really want to thank you for hosting this conversation, in particular Supervisor Mitchell, for your leadership steadfast over the years to support the arts. And it's really crucial that this reflects the mandate that we fought so hard for with the Cultural Equity and Inclusion Initiative, to make these venues affordable, accessible, and culturally relevant. And one thing I also want to shout out as part of our mission is that the arts are really powerful not just to have visibility for our diverse communities, but also to bridge diverse communities and to have more empathy and social cohesion as we understand each other through the power of the arts. I married into a Jewish family, and I really have seen this rising antisemitism...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Pickle Drag Queen. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Pickle. I'm the drag warrior of the city of West Hollywood, but speaking as an individual today, I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell and Barger for spearheading this really important work and just voice my support for transparency in the way of data. I think that the Hollywood Bowl is obviously such an important cultural institution. I grew up in Los Angeles, actually in District Two, in Country Club Park, and I was just talking to a neighbor, because I was down there, and she was talking about how they can't afford to go to as many cultural events because of the price barriers, and they're homeowners. So I think that this kind of data is really important in understanding how low-income people are not getting access. And also, we need information on the cultural relevance, and the data is just going to be, I think, the best way to access that information. So I appreciate this effort and your work on this project. It's so important.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Marie Kellier. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Marie Kellier. I'm the founder and creative producer of Los Angeles Carnival and a resident in the Second District. I'm also an arts practitioner and producer of culturally relevant programs and creative activities in the district. I'd like to thank Supervisor Mitchell for working with the L.A. Phil to make Hollywood Bowl events more affordable, accessible, and culturally relevant. Because as an arts educator, working with residents in some of the most underserved communities in the district, many of them with large youth, immigrant, and linguistically diverse populations, I have firsthand experience of how transformative participation in the arts can be. Not only does it nurture authentic and individual cultural heritage, but its exposure to and participation in other traditions provides a critical bridge between each other, between people of different traditions. The L.A. Phil holds immense cultural...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Tanisha Hall. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Tanisha Hall. I'm the founder and executive director of Whitehall Arts Academy, a performing arts organization and facility located in the Second District. We are, first of all, huge supporters of Supervisor Mitchell, and we appreciate the efforts made in order to make data more accessible and to keep ticket prices accessible. As a youth organization that reaches about 2,500 youth annually, it is super important that our Black and Brown youth and our economically desperate youth are able to access places like the Hollywood Bowl. I know for myself, as Tamika Washington said, the only times I go usually is when I'm given free tickets. So we need to make sure that our youth that are in the Second District still have access to amazing places like the Hollywood Bowl. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Brittany Walker. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Brittany Walker. I'm the founder and CEO of Butterfly's Haven, an organization dedicated to supporting youth and fostering community resilience here in Los Angeles in our Eighth District. I would like to thank Supervisor Mitchell for her work with L.A. Phil to ensure Hollywood Bowl events become more affordable and accessible and culturally relevant for all of Angelinos. Many individuals and families we serve in our community face the challenges in assessing culturally enriched events due to ticket and transportation costs. For them, venues like the Hollywood Bowl often feel out of reach, and this can limit their ability to participate in diverse cultural experiences. It is critical that we make sure that L.A. Phil follows through on the commitment to Supervisor Mitchell to make ticket and transportation data publicly available. Transparency in how affordable tickets are distributed and use will provide valuable insight in how we all are serving our local residents and making sure that it is affordable like the others.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the Board.
Wonderful. We'll go to our last speaker in person. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Lula Washington, co-founder of Lula Washington Dance Theater. I just want to say, the arts need a hero, and we hope that all of y'all will be the hero for the arts in the county. We save lives. We can save lives if you help us save lives. We too, all over the United States. We almost didn't make it through COVID. So y'all need to look at all of those things when you consider bringing young people into art venues and the highest venue, the Hollywood Bowl. I performed there one time, two times, but half of the people that I serve couldn't afford to go there. So I'm all in favor of putting money behind that, but also looking for the heroes in here today that's going to save all of the arts in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 68 is before us. Moved by Supervisor Barger, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Horfath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horfath, aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
It's my understanding that there are no specials today, and so with that, we'll now hear from members of the public wishing to address the Board on all remaining items not held by Supervisors, as well as general public comment. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on these items. You must indicate the agenda item numbers that you wish to address, including general public comment, in order for us to allocate the appropriate amount of time. Executive Officer, please read the call-in information and call those members of the public who've signed up to speak on these remaining items, as well as general public comment.
Members of the public, you will have up to three minutes to address the Board on all remaining items and general public comment. You will have one minute for one item, two minutes for two or more items, and one additional minute for general public comment. Please state your name and clearly indicate the agenda item numbers you will be addressing. You may only address the Board on these items. We will now call in-person speakers, and while they are coming forward, we will take telephonic speakers.
Well, Jesus Rahas, Steve Alfred, Victor Ricks, Charles Kwan, Connie Acosta, Dr. Ivy Hilton Priestess, Lupita C., Lena Mallett, Amir Casimir, Sierra Leone Anderson, Natalie Segura, Asia Medley, George Garcia, and Annette Silva, please come forward, and staff will assist you. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address the remaining items not held by the Board and general public comment, if you have not already done so, please press one then zero now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Roy Humphries. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Oh, thank God for a new day and a new way that Donald Trump, our president, is going to take and then turn this country and this state around, I hope. And as to Supervisor Mitchell, that I'm tired of this pleading, talking down Black people, and when they tell you to do is look at 40 killed, billions of dollars... And as to Supervisor Mitchell, that I'm tired of this pleading, talking down Black people. And when they tell you have to do is look at 40 killed, billions of dollars in destruction, or Black Lives Matter, that is disgusting. If that's what Black lives are all about, you shouldn't be allowed to say, and we just, it's just disgusting. And then we have, and those were all Black businesses, Black neighborhoods, Black-on-Black crime. And notice that the Black, single-family situation going from 25% to 73%. And if you go on my YouTube channel, you see a Black woman talking about that most recently. And then we can go to Hilda Solis. Do not get me going on her degradation of the Latino community.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
It's culture.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Well, don't you want to know which items? I'd like to speak on the Olympics, Paralympics, which, you know, regional coordination, this all speaks to the same thing. Are the priorities of our local governments for the people, the Angelenos? We had a great parade for the Dodger victory. Awesome, you know, and billions of dollars spinning the turnstile in Inglewood and at all the big mega events, including the Hollywood Bowl, where we have a beautiful presentation from the folks who probably couldn't attend the Lackey fundraiser over the weekend. But nonetheless, our Angelenos want access to the cultural assets. But what's most upsetting is that you blocked me from commenting on the county hall. I stand with Supervisor Han. There's debt there for a reason. They put that county hall by the metro station. It's across from the court. If the court's not safe for seismic, why are we going to go help it? They're both, it's a blueprint. The whole county building and the entry in the middle, it's all been designed a certain way. To throw it out and move into an high-rise is appalling beyond belief. Get a life. It's the same greed that lies behind the tax credit, too, in B.C. Universal and the studios who own the Olympics. They're making money hand over fist as Angelenos struggle. And the county has a responsibility to be the bulwark and stand up to these matters, protect the home of the county, make the Hollywood Bowl accessible, and do your jobs. I don't understand it. This is one of the low points in television history. So I hope everybody does okay in the aftermath of this upheaval in the election marketplace. Very, very worried. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Anna Rubin. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
My name is Anna Rubin and I'm the Child Welfare Policy Director with the Association of Community Human Service Agencies, representing 87 nonprofits, including 26 foster family agencies, providing services in L.A. County. I'm providing public comment and strong support of item six. Thank you Supervisor Barger and Horvath for your bold follow-through to implement solutions and initiate state-level advocacy to address the FFA insurance crisis. And thank you to the entire board for your commitment and track record of supporting children and families. This motion recognizes FFAs as a critical component of our continuum of care and child welfare, and our FFAs are dedicated to finding a way to continue serving children and families, but they cannot be sustained without access to alternate insurance and financial support in the short term and the resolution of the theories underlying insurability issues at the heart of the crisis in the long term. While we must act to support FFAs in procuring insurance, we remain deeply concerned that it is only a matter of time before we see problems with availability and affordability of insurance across the entire human service sector. The solutions identified in this motion are critical for steps preserving FFAs, and we hope that the county continues to demonstrate leadership on an issue that could imminently jeopardize the vital services CBOs provide to our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sasha Struthers. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Sasha Struthers. I wanted to comment on motion 35, which I believe is a motion regarding changing the rent increase formula in the county. I wanted to speak in opposition of that. We have AV 1482, which is a negotiated effort between landlords and tenants regarding rent increase formulas. That has been thus further dwindled down already by the board, who already has more restrictive rent increase in place. If you were to further reduce that and effectively make it less impossible for landlords to increase rent, all it will result in is the removal of housing that's needed for tenants in the county. The cost of providing housing has increased year over year. We have an insurance crisis in the county presently. Also, when the state or insurers are leaving the county, leaving the state because of the inability to insure all of these buildings, the premiums go two to four times higher. And utilities are going up, labor and supplies are going up.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Megan Edner. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello?
Looks like they've removed themselves from the queue. We'll go to the line of Joanne Rallo. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
I'm speaking today on behalf of the 10 mothers who have had their children taken from them or are about to by the L.A. Superior Court system, specifically by Judge Carla Garrett in Long Beach Department S14. Googling her name will show you several videos and online reviews of the atrocities she has conducted in her court and violations of her judicial canon, from extreme abuse of her powers, threats, intimidation towards domestic violence victims, the abuse she's subjecting to innocent young children by forcing them to deal with their abusive fathers, and not only ignoring evidence, but denying many mothers their rights for due process in order to protect their children. We have complained to the Judiciary Commission. We have complained to her supervisors and peers. She has been served a recall petition twice. We're about to get the mainstream media involved, but with your help, Board of Supervisors, in investigating her corruption and bias against mothers, maybe we can forego getting the media involved, which will only give more of a black eye on this broken system. We, Mother, beg that you intervene in this issue and stop the abuse and pain that this guy is creating.
Our next participant is Leon Ralph. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Leon Ralph, and I'm a Black and independent owner of a small apartment complex for over 30 years in the Los Angeles County, District Two, unincorporated area of West Athens, Westmont. As an independent small owner, I believe owners with 25 units or less deserve the same recognition as a 10-unit owner. As a small, single-property owner, I must also cover my costs to stay afloat. This measure seems particularly unfair when luxury units, those receiving $4,000 or more per month in rent in a building with at least 25 units, are being given an additional 2% increase, double the amount for small owners. This despite the fact that luxury owners or larger owners that are already receiving higher rents and their properties are typically newer, so they require fewer repairs. The definition of small owner should be expanded to leave-off, where luxury owners start by being increased to 25 units or fewer, as well as receiving the same 2% increase.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Irene Rivera. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yes, Board of Supervisors, I urge you to oppose item 35 and leave the formula unchanged. The county's own commission report acknowledges that the 3% cap creates a higher mismatch between changes in operating costs and rents and poses a risk to property owners. This action imposes extremely price control that will continue to negatively impact the country's housing stock and residents. This will make the housing crisis worse. How are you, how are these providers expected to manage expenses from price controls preventive of even keeping pace with the Consumer Price Index? Operations expenses would tend to exceed CPI. The March Rent Stabilization Analysis does not justify such stringent measures. Policy must be rooted in sound analysis. This proposal is fundamentally anti-housing and will make homes even more expensive and harder to find. For years, property owners were prohibited from buying.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Danielle Elliott. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
I'm not, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Oh, great. Okay, great. Thank you. Ladies, most of all, the measures requiring funding on the November 5th ballot will be financed through an increase in property taxes. In 2024, 11 laws impacting tenants' rights, accessory dwelling units, housing production, and environmental restrictions were enacted. Additionally, Governor Newsom approved 32 new housing bills that will take effect in 2025. While these initiatives are commendable, the soaring costs will make it unfeasible for housing providers to bear the financial burden, especially as the board continues to diminish an already inadequate rent increase formula. The Consumer Price Index is merely a theoretical framework and fails to reflect the true expenses associated with providing housing. My actual costs far exceed what is reported to the board. As a longtime small owner, the housing provider who anticipated that my property would support me through retirement.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Mike Brooks. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Mike, are you there? Mike Brooks?
Hi, I'm here. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I've been in the property management business for 20 years, and I've seen the damaging effects that all these limits have on housing supply. And almost everyone that I know, former clients, are leaving and exiting this business. Nobody wants to be in it. Nobody wants to build anymore. And also after the pandemic, we weren't even, no one was allowed to raise rents for multiple years. I think it's appalling that anyone would even begin to consider a cap on the amount of money that landlords who have suffered through this for years can raise rents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Michelle Becky. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, I oversee a 60-unit, 55-year-old building in Torrance that has been under the same ownership for 40 years. And this is in regard to measure 35 again. The past five years for us have been one financial whiplash after another. There was COVID when we couldn't raise rents. There were complicated post-COVID ordinances and state emergencies that partially or entirely prevented us from raising rents. There has been inflation that made maintenance and repairs prohibitively costly. And as several other speakers have said, our insurance rates have just gone through the roof. We had State Farm for more than 20 years. Over the past few months, they canceled six of our seven policies, and we have been forced to replace those with poorer coverage at twice the cost. And as some people said, we were lucky for some landlords that's gone up three to four times.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
We'll now go to speakers in person. We'll come back to you. Moderator, please go ahead.
I am speaking on item 35 and 65, so that's two minutes. I'm Connie Acosta, owner and manager of three RSO units. I oppose the L.A. County Board of Supervisors recommended amendments to the RSO and tenant protection ordinance. This year, I had repairs for two rentals that far exceeded their monthly incomes. Yet still, I had to pay the mortgage, maintain the property, and continue to save for the ever-increasing property tax from my own pocket. Our property taxes make up the largest and most stable component of the general fund in the city of Los Angeles. This fund is distributed to L.A. City Departments to treat homelessness in its diversity and totality and tenant housing assistance. Yet you are lessening that fund when you wholeheartedly try to wipe out of existence RSO small property owners. To improve tenant protections, Ms. Mitchell, please hire an ethical analyst to use 100% of the Consumer Price Index to determine our RSO allowable rental increase to 10%. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Item 26. My name is Victor Ricks.
Can you speak right into that mic so we can hear you just a little bit better? Thank you.
Yes, I'm a housing provider, and my concerns is that the cost of goods and services have gone up. I think that it should be looked at as two separate things. You have tenants and their cost of living, and then you have business, the cost of managing and running an apartment building. Over the four, last four years during the pandemic, we had no increases. We were supposed to get seven, then that was reduced to 4%. So that's 1% per year. The cost of rubbish is 5% every year without fail. This year, the insurances went up from 3 to 400% per year, and those costs are going to continue to go up. All the buildings that I manage, they're in rent control areas in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You get one minute for each item that you speak on and one minute for general public comment, so are you speaking on any other items? Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jesus Rojas. I'll be speaking on item 35 and general public comment. My name is Jesus Rojas. I come from the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. A rent increase of less than 100% of Consumer Price Index will not allow rental housing providers to stay in business. The CPI substantially underestimates the cost of providing rental housing. In addition, the HRNA report is extremely flawed by leaving out more than half of owners' total cost by failing to include mortgage payments. We urge the county to consider the less extreme alternative to changing the RSTPO. Owners with 11 to 25 units are still small owners, with many owning only a single building that must cover all existing costs, including mortgage payments, to stay in business. Small owners should be defined as 25 units or fewer and should receive the same additional 2% increase as luxury unit owners. Small owners provide naturally occurring affordable housing and should receive equal support from the county as luxury owners. If these changes cannot be made today, then we urge the county to continue the existing 4% increase for an additional six months so that these changes can be made to reflect the needs of small owners and to consider a less radical option for the RSTPO. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Annette Silva. I'm a former incarcerated youth, and I'm representing the Young Women's Freedom Center. I'm speaking on general public comment. How long would it take for you guys to fix this broken system and do something that will benefit the youth? I've seen money get poured into all this necessary stuff for years, and I still don't know how that's benefited me from that. We need more opportunities. I'm out here speaking for the 50 girls and youth that cannot. They're kept in juvenile home without anyone to listen. When you guys go for inspections, why don't you guys talk to the youth, ask for what they want and their needs? Instead of walking through the unit for only a couple of minutes or seconds, we also have a voice and we should be heard. Instead of sending people to the facility, maybe you guys should go experience the unsuitable conditions these youths are experiencing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Natalie Segura. I'm a youth fellow at Youth Justice Coalition. I'm here today to demand our youth needs that are not in the ballot. In November 2021, the Board of Supervisors passed a motion to decarcerate girls and gender-expensive youth. Yet, nothing is being done. In November 2021, over 1,400 girls and gender-expensive youths were detained in California, typically in correctional facilities that are unable to provide long-term solutions to the challenges facing young people. Let's provide more resources for our youth, like mental health resource, fun activities to support our youth. Cutting classes, career pathways, free driving lessons. Again, please honor your November 2021 commitment to free the 50 girls and gender-expensive youth and fully fund Youth Justice Reimagine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
George Garcia, item number two, public comment.
Can you speak right into the mic so we can hear you a little better? Thank you.
Item number two, public comment. Good morning. George Garcia from District Two with the Youth Justice Coalition. Today I stand before you to discuss a pivotal opportunity for our youth and the future of our communities. We have an extraordinary chance to reinvest 410 million from the probation budget into transformative initiatives that foster hope, healing, and opportunity for our young people. It's time to reimagine our approach to youth justice and prioritize their well-being. First, let's talk about the Youth Justice Reimagine. First, let's talk about the Youth Justice Reimagine initiative. By relocating funds, we can create supportive housing options that provide stability and a sense of belonging for our youth. Next, we must invest in YES teams, youth empowerment solution teams. These teams will consist of trained professionals who work directly with youth, providing mentorship and guidance and support. Peacebuilders and credible messengers are also vital components of these reinvestments. These individuals possess the lived experiences and wisdom to connect to youth on a personal level. And lastly, we must prioritize youth jobs by creating job opportunities for our young people. We not fully provide them financial independence, but also instill a sense of purpose and responsibility. Employment can be powerful tool for change, enabling our youth to develop and build confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Speaking on Item Number Two and Public Comment as well. Hello, it's an afternoon, y'all, but I'm struggling to call it a good one because of the news that we received this morning. However, I still choose to see the decision in a different light. Ultimately, I recognize that the world that we lived in is shaped not by the presidency but by the people in this room. It's the young people in our schools that attend them and revolutionize them. It's the organizers and caring adults that listen to and uplift the freedom of those young people. And finally, it's the local officials like you all that I hope are influenced by the folks before you in this room. I want you all to look before, to look past the money and preconceived notions of policing incarceration to see what we need. We need you to free the girls and gender expansive youth in Los Angeles County Detention Centers. We've been saying this for over a year, and it's time to make the shift. We want you to be a part of the radical shift in public consciousness away from a deficit model of public health and safety. We need you to free those young people and utilize the organizations that the systems and communities have created in response to community violence over the years. We need to trust the people and the organizations that have made the difference by bringing formerly incarcerated and cis and past youth before you, day after day, week after week, for the last year, to tell you that what we don't need is police, what we don't need is incarceration. What we need is support. What we need is care first for our communities and for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, y'all. Lena Mallett with the Children's Defense Fund, Lay Up and Reimagine L.A., asking the Board to end its silence and address the crisis we're faced with yet again and hold a public conversation for young people, their families, and others who've been left in the dark with their loved ones in limbo. It's your responsibility to inform us about what this board plans to do and how you intend to rectify this decades-long support of a department that has harmed thousands and stolen billions from this community. With staffing callouts and extended leave as the persistent recurring root of most noncompliance issues, the only way to maintain compliance with state mandated ratios is to lower and sustain a decreased youth population until there are no more. Reinvigorated commitment to structured decarceration efforts that are inclusive of providers and community actors are needed immediately. And you can start with your promise of freeing the 50 girls and gender expansive youth. This board, in consultation with other relevant stakeholders, should also issue a motion against any new criminal charges and adult transfers pursuant to WIC 875. You cannot keep punishing young people for-
Thank you. You're also speaking on Item Two? Then we'll give her one more minute, please.
Thank you. You cannot keep punishing young people for the conditions you are creating. Through these cycles of noncompliance, unsuitability, community has witnessed, this board devote all county resources to the probation department despite its stated prioritization of young people. In March of 2023, this board recommitted itself to the vision of YJR. Now is the time, while budget proposals are in the preliminary drafting phase, to push the CEO's office to work through the "complicated operational factors" and begin making good on y'all's promise to shift to a model that is care first, jails last, healing first, and probation never. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm here to speak on general comment and agenda Item Number Two. Hello, my name is Lupita Carvalho, and I'm here today with Sister Warriors Coalition. I stand before you today to demand the immediate release of all girls and gender expansive youth currently detained in LA County Juvenile Halls. Right now, 19 girls are held in Los Pedrinos, a facility that starkly represents our collective failure to protect and support our youth. Out of those 19 girls I personally know about half having the opportunity to work with them. Many are trapped in generational cycles, yearning from new perspective but lacking the resource to break free. Others are battling addiction and struggling to find support, especially when their families have already given up on them. Then there's the ones that caught up in a complex web of probation and DCFS, left without family to turn to, effectively stuck in a system that doesn't serve their needs. One girl remains consistently on my mind, a young woman grappling with several mental health issues. Los Pedrinos is not a place for her or any of these girls. What is needed is community, real compassion, support systems that nurture their growth and healing. Community supports mean investing to resources that truly help our youth thrive instead of spending $800,000 annually per young person on incarceration. Imagine redirecting that money towards prevention and supportive services. Two years ago, the Board of Supervisors committed to decarcerating girls and gender expansive youth, yet here we are still waiting for the promises to be fulfilled. This delay is unacceptable. Over half, 51% of LA County's incarceration youth are held in facilities that fail to meet even basic standards of well-being and rehabilitation. These conditions harm our youth, depriving them of the chance to rebuild their lives. We must act now. We must invest in youth centers, community-led solutions. Picture a future where resources are directed towards creating opportunities, youth centers, safe housing, YES teams, and credible messengers, peacebuilders, and meaningful jobs. These are the real building blocks in healthy, thriving communities. We cannot forget Brian Diaz, who tragically lost his life in a juvenile hall over-
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, everybody. My name is Asia Medley. I'm speaking for Item Number Two, General Public Comment. I stand in front of you today as a teacher and community organizer. Are young people continue to suffer at the hands of the state, my students included? And the BOS is responsible for not fulfilling their promises. Prison is no place for youth. You promised to invest in effective, community-based programs and have failed to do it. Instead of investing in our youth, you continue to increase incarceration of them, which we see has had a negative effect on youth for generations to come. Two years ago, you committed to decarcerating girls, decarcerating girls and gender expansive youth. Again, like I said, you failed. You need to close the juvenile halls that drug and abuse our youth, that trap them in that system on purpose, intentionally. And you need to own up and take accountability for your lack of action. You have the power to liberate our youth, and the delay is unacceptable. You must act now. You must invest in youth-centered, community-led solutions. Billions of dollars are put into the criminal justice systems, and that money should be going to rebuild our communities. That money should be redirected into resources that help build our communities instead of killing our communities. It's up to you. You have a large, large community base right here who has been saying the same thing to you over and over and over again for years. It's time that y'all listen and free the 50 girls and gender expansive youth now.
Thank you. We're now going to go back to speakers on the line. Moderator, please go ahead.
Before we go to remote speakers, well, Josara Holliday, Maya Faith, Maura Greer, Christina Boyar, Jeff Hein, Byron Jose, Estefania Tequila, Irma Cervantes, Alicia Godinez, Emily Zamora, Deanna Pittman, Daniel Jimenez, Justin Marks, Shane Henson, Trinity Relford, Alejandro Gomez, L.A. Byron, and Victor Velasco, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the next remote speaker, please?
Our next participant is Adrian Lugo. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. My name is Adrian Lugo with the East LA Women's Center. I would like to speak in support of Item Number Nine. I want to thank Supervisors Sotis Elise and Lindsay Horvath for their motion to help prevent overdoses for youth engaging the child welfare system. DCFS social workers are on the front lines of ensuring vulnerable youth are healthy and safe. This is why I and the East LA Women's Center support this motion, to ensure that these social workers are trained on best practices to prevent overdoses and identify any behavioral health red flags. I request support to support this important motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Gil Gonzalez. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Gil Gonzalez. I am against, I'm calling to vote against, to speak against the rent control measure for Item 35. I work for a real estate developer, and rent control measures, such as this, have a negative impact on housing. It actually limits housing. Because unfortunately, housing projects are financed by investors, and projects in cities that have rent control are put on a blacklist and no flies on list by investors. So it's going to have a negative effect and limit the housing. I think there's other ways to tackle the housing demand and measures like SB 1818, which provide developers more density in exchange for providing 11% to 15% affordable housing on more creative ways than rent control-
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Margaret Sullivan. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Margaret?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
As an ethical mom and pop housing provider in the Second District, I implore the Board to reconsider Item 35. I can tell you that my operating costs already exceed the regional CPI by 45%, and the disparity is fueled by inflation on costs that I have no control over: trash collection, water, utilities, and insurance. So cutting allowed increases to a mere fraction of the CPI will drive owners of the rental business out of the business and dissuade others from entering in. That will diminish the supply of rental housing and the maintenance of the rental housing that is available. This plan is a big mistake that will exacerbate the housing crisis. I cede my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Meg Rowe. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. And looks like they've removed themselves from the queue. We'll go to line of Alex Steinberg. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. Alex Steinberg, your line is open.
Alex, are you there? Alex Steinberg? Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jeffrey Fowler. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Jeff Fowler, the president of the Apartment Owners Association of California. And we and our members strongly oppose Item 35. And this is for Item 35 and general comment. Just want to bring to mind Argentina here. They removed rent control, and their housing supply went up 195% almost immediately. People that are holding their units off the market. If you put a rent cap, if you make it lower and lower and lower, more and more people are going to be pulling out, which is bad for renters. It reduces the inventory for them. It lowers the quality of life of renters because there's less money to work with to make upgrades. Crime increases, too. So those are all really bad things for renters. And, you know, so I just really would ask you the question, do you want to create more housing, or do you want to control more of it? And I think, you know, as you control it, it's the destruction of housing that's there. Look at Santa Monica and how many units have been pulled off the market because of what they have there. So I just want to encourage you to change the formula, but actually change it, look at what real costs are. Consider the Department of Public Works Construction Management Division, or Building Services Division, or Internal Service Division for a report that would tell you what the costs of providing general repairs are for county facilities. Those departments are capable to provide the Board with better insight because the CPI is just not, it's not, it doesn't relate 100%. Thank you for listening, and I hope you are able to consider this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jerome Overstreet. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, yes. I'm speaking on Item Number 35 and general comment. My suggestion is to only, if you're going to have a cap, which I oppose, only cap the owners who are at or above the market. Ted just published the fair housing market rates in August. Allow property owners whose rents are below market to raise their rents to full CPI. Those of us who have been property owners like myself, we've been fair to our centers and haven't raised the rent every year, so don't punish us. You have data in the rent registry to determine if owners are at or above the market. There are many of us who are so far below the market that we could raise our rent every year at full CPI, and we still wouldn't reach market. In the meantime, corporations are charging $4,000 a month for a one-bedroom, while we struggle to maintain our buildings and pay property taxes. I urge you to be fair and use the rent registry information to make a fair decision and not treat all of us like corporations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Josh Hersher. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Josh Hersher. I'm a very small mom and pop landlord in Los Angeles. I'm opposing Item 35. In the last five years, I've not raised rent, mostly due to COVID. My property has been devalued by 1/3, $800,000. I was a teacher and a basketball coach, and I took a chance with my 401K and bought this property. I had a squatter in the property for 11 months, so all my cash, everything is in the negative for the whole year. If you cap rent increases even further, then I'm out of business. Thank you for your time. I hope you understand what I'm saying. It's really bad. The legislation has destroyed me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Trina Lopez. If your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Trina Lopez?
Lopez, your line is open.
Hi, good afternoon. Yeah, you listen to me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon. I'm just, my name is Trina Lopez. I'm from Nuevo Minister Mujer Entera, and we're supporting to Ilva Solis, Item Number Nine.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Lopez, are you still there? Okay, we're going to go to the next speaker.
Thank you. Next is Victor Reyes. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Yes, my name is Victor Reyes, here on behalf of VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, here to speak on Item Number 35 and 65. For Item 35, we strongly oppose the proposed 3% annual rent adjustment cap within the ordinance. This arbitrary cap is completely disconnected from the actual economic reality and the rising costs facing many of the housing providers. Operating costs have risen about 47% over the past seven years, far outpacing the 27% increase in the CPI. This unsustainable price control will force providers to defer needed repairs, reducing the quality and availability of rental housing. Rent control policies have been shown to shrink the rental supply by up to 15% as owners are discouraged from participating in the market. With regards to 65, Item 65, we strongly oppose the proposed formula for determining fair return on rental properties under the LA County ordinance. This formula is fundamentally flawed. It excludes key financial obligations like mortgage and debt payments that significantly impact the viability of the rental properties. The implicit assumption that owners are currently earning a fair return is simply not true. Rent increases have been capped or prohibited in recent years, even as-
If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Rose Littles and I'm from Willowbrook Senior Center, and I'm calling to thank you for your willing support for the need of affordable tickets for the concert at the Hollywood Bowl. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Glenn Bear. If your line is open, your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello, this is Glenn Bear. Thank you for listening to me. I'm a small landlord and I would like to say that a broad arbitrary rent cap targets your most desirable landlord type, which is your small property owner, mom and pops. These folks have the least amount of financial reserves to handle large, large expenses related to property management. And if you arbitrarily cap the rent that they can charge for their ongoing tenants, they're going to make the decisions that they want to get out of the rental market and they're going to sell. And the only people who can sell these days are folks who have deeper pockets and are corporate landlords. So basically, you're eliminating your most desirable landlord pool by having arbitrary and low rental caps. Rent control with large caps is picking and choosing winners and losers, and I think we're in a better position than we want to make everybody win, not pick losers.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please. Moderator, we're going to go to speakers in person, so we'll come back to you in just a little bit. Please go ahead.
I'll be speaking on item number two and general public comment. My name is Sierra Leone Anderson. I was named by my father. I am a leader within Students Deserve, working to end the school-to-prison pipeline. I've been doing this work since I was thirteen years old. I'm really excited because on Friday, I'm going to be eighteen years old. Womanhood should just be beginning for me, but it's not. Board of Supervisors, how long have you been women? When did you stop being a girl? I stopped being a girl when I was eight, the first time I was targeted for incarceration, criminalized, and almost suspended from my ongoing mental health struggles by the campus cop, Officer Chris, when I was in the fourth grade. Or maybe I stopped being a girl when I was seven, homeless with my mom and three sisters, or six, the first time I was sexually abused and ignored. So when did you stop being a girl? How long did you have? Five, eighteen, twenty years? When you're fifteen years old, abused by your environment since you were born, then punished for how you respond to that abuse, what are you? How were you charged? Victim or criminal? Girl or woman? Me and my whole community come to you today with so much anger because we are girls or once were, and you failed us then. You fail us now when you make promises to free our girls then don't. You fail us now when you spend billions towards probation. You fail us now when I make public comment and you can't even look me in my eyes. You five women have the power to free our girls, so free the fifty girls and gender expansive youth currently caged in LA County under your watch.
Next speaker, please. If you could please stay quiet so we can hear more speakers, it would, it allows everybody to be able to speak. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Board. Byron speaking on agenda item two and general public comment. I'm here as a constituent and concerned community member. Free our youth, all of them. That includes the youth being tortured in Los Pedrinos, and that includes the fifty girls and gender expansive youth. The fact that agenda item two was not held on the, on today's agenda, on today of all days, is very telling, especially that it wasn't held by the members of this board that have been here the longest. Even more telling is the fact that a simple report as an attachment on today's agenda from the chief probation officer is considered enough. Why isn't Guillermo Vera Rosa here to listen to this motions directives? Where is the, where is the, where, who is in charge of the probation department and why do continue, continue funding such a failed department? Free LA youth.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'd like to comment on item thirty-five, sixty-five, and general public comment. My name is Christina Boyer. In my personal capacity, I just want to say, I stand with the students here today and the freeing of girls and gender non-conforming youth. In another capacity, I am an attorney of public counsel and a member of the Keep LA House Coalition in County District Three. I urge the board to pass the draft ordinance from DCBA, amending the rent increase formula and the RSGPO. Thank you to Supervisor Mitchell for putting forth the amendments. Keep LA House supports the county's adoption of a formula that is based on sixty percent of CPI with a three percent cap. This formula is critical for keeping families in their homes as tenants carry massive debt, are majority rent burden, and face ever increasing costs of living with stagnant wages. While we applaud the adoption of this formula, we continue to be concerned about the ordinance's inclusion of additional increases for small landlords. A low-income tenant should not get a higher increase simply because their landlord is a smaller one. Rather than allow these extra increases, the county should create programs like mortgage and property maintenance support programs for truly struggling small landlords. The HRNA report specifically recommended not having an alternate formula for small landlords, and a comprehensive study by the Economic Roundtable commissioned by LA City on its RSO could not find evidence that small landlords were struggling more than their corporate counterparts, and that overall landlord's net operating income has exceeded inflation, with operating costs even going up, making up only a third of landlord's income. The sixty percent CPI formula with a three percent cap should apply to all landlords. It will not drive them out, but it will keep people in their homes. When the ordinance is implemented, the self-certification process for small property owners needs to be as thorough as possible. Whether in the ordinance or in the guidelines, small property owners should have to affirmatively indicate they meet each part of the definition of small property owners in the ordinance. Please pass the draft ordinance, keep people in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good morning. My name is Daniel Jimenez. I'm director of community organizing with Dino City Struggle. I'm going to speak on item thirty-five, sixty-five, general public comment. But before I get started, I just want to acknowledge the powerful comment that we just listened to of our compañera and just want to share how moved I am, you know, and as Dino City Struggle, we have always fought for youth justice as well. And I just want to, you know, like, support the Students Deserve, you know, asks today to free youth, right? And to, to really think about what that means, not only for them, right, for, for everybody, and to make, you know, the right choice, which is free, free our youth, their criminalized our youth. Once again, my name is Daniel Jimenez. I'm, I'm here to support the rent stabilization ordinance and the recommendations by DCBA that were brought forward to this board, which includes a cap of three percent on the rent increases as well as sixty percent CPI. Although we know that this is not, you know, a perfect equation, we know that today renters are being burdened by a high cost of rent, right? Often, you know, one check away from being homeless, often, you know, being, you know, harassed by their landlords, right, who are using violent tactics to get their money, right? And we see this time and time again. Today, you're going to hear from two of our members on how rent increases is going to impact their families. But greater than that, I want you to hear the greater story. The report that DCBA recently, you know, reported through, to LA City, found no correlation between the one percent increase of utilities with the actual cost of utilities or how, how much their utilities go on per year. And like that also, you know, like, it found that small landlords actually charge more for their properties than corporate landlords. And then you have people who are living under these small landlords, and they're not a fault that they're living there. That's not their, that's not their fault. That's not, you know, something that they can control. But yet, you know, again, you know, in this motion, it also includes those exclusions for small landlords. All I ask is to reconsider and to think about, right, in the implementation phase when you are pushing this forward, to ensure that those landlords are certifying, when they're self-certifying, that they're actually telling the truth and they're actually investigating, right, that they're actually small landlords and they're not hiding, you know, behind legal tactics, right, to, to appear that they're small landlords. And to all of those that are calling in, right, using that language, I say shame on you because you're putting profit over people. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm going to be speaking on item two and general public comment. I'm Maya Faith Daniels with both the Translatina Coalition and Reimagine LA. My pronouns are they/them, and I stand with the fifty young girls and gender expansive youth that are currently being forcibly held in probation camps across Los Angeles County. In November of 2021, the board made commitments to the public to end the incarceration of fifty young women and gender expansive youth and implement alternatives to incarceration with Youth Justice Reimagined, agreeing to take on a care-first, jails-last approach. Today, at the rally and press conference held outside this building by the Youth Justice Coalition, we read a letter written by a young girl currently being held in Los Pedrinos who had a concussion and begged for medical attention, but instead was placed in solitary confinement for several days. No one would give her medical attention, so she was forced to drink bleach to force officers to get her the medical attention she rightly deserved several hours later. These are children. These are people's children. It has been abhorrent to hear about the over three thousand sexual abuse claims that were retold by the incarcerated youth and included in the class action lawsuit against the county's juvenile facilities and foster care programs, and these being only the accounts that have been reported and documented, not mentioning the incited fight clubs created and held by officers inside of these camps. We ask for these abusive and corrosive facilities to be shut down. We ask to end the incarceration of Los Angeles's youth. We demand the one hundred and forty million dollars that resides in the hands of the LA County Probation Department to be invested in Youth Justice Reimagined and be managed and distributed by the Department of Youth Development. We demand justice for the survivors of these abusive systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm speaking on motion two and public comment, so I need two minutes. Hello, my name is Jazal Holiday. I'm here today to tell you to free the fifty girls and gender expansive youth like you promised to do November 2021. Girls and gender expansive youth entering the state's youth legal facilities are overwhelmingly youth of color. Black and Latino girls make up eighty percent of girls' annual detention admissions. Sixty-four percent of girls involved in the juvenile justice system have experienced some form of abuse. Sexual abuse is one of the primary, primarily predators of girls' entry into the juvenile justice system. Inside, girls experience a system not equipped to identify and treat the violence and trauma. The environment inside can re-trigger girls and subject them to the, to new incidents of sexual victimization. Reinvest the four hundred and ten, ten million into community resources like YJC and fully fund Youth Justice Reimagined. I am a formerly incarcerated girl. I am the proof in the pudding that everyone deserves a second chance. I am not who I was five years ago. Reinvest in our youth and our future and free the fifty girls. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Deanna Pittman, and I'm here today with my siblings from the Young Women's Freedom Center. I'll be speaking on general public comment and agenda item two. I've been many, I've been to many of these meetings before, but today feels different. I'm exhausted and quite frankly, I'm scared of LA County's future, especially when it comes to youth justice, especially if we don't act now. The election was yesterday and youth justice was not on the ballot, but to us, youth justice is always on the ballot and it's always on our hearts and on our minds. The current conditions that girls and gender expansive youth are facing in your juvenile halls is deplorable. What makes it worse is that y'all haven't said anything publicly to the community. Now's the time to act on the promise that this board made in 2021 to decarcerate girls and gender expansive youth. Let's start with the troubled Los Pedrinos Juvenile Hall. As of October twenty, twenty-second, children have been caged in this facility that has been found unsuitable to house youth. Our facilities are in crisis, there's low staff, safety checks aren't happening, programming is inconsistent, and so much more. We live in a county of almost ten million residents with a multi-billion dollar budget, but only about fifty of those residents are girls and gender expansive youth that are incarcerated in these halls. Are we really saying that we cannot come up with alternatives to incarceration for fifty girls out of a county of ten million people? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm speaking on general public comment. My name is Estefania, and I am a participant with the Young Women's Freedom Center. I am twenty years old and a young mom to a two-year-old. I am here today to advocate for the girls and gender expansive youth inside LA County juvenile halls and see why y'all spent almost a million dollars to incarcerate one young person when imagine what, what that money or a portion of that money can be used for housing programs, youth programs, and for teen mom programs, or actually use that money for the programs y'all say help the youth that is incarcerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Monica Juarez, and I am a participant with the Young Women Freedom Center. I am eighteen years old and I am a young teen mom. I am here to support Young Women Freedom Center. I came here so my voice can be heard and supported. I have never been in juvenile hall or know anyone who's been in juvenile hall, but I've heard things that happens in juvenile hall. I think there should be support for young teen moms and among other programs for young girls and young moms in juvenile hall and out of juvenile hall, supporting with baby supplies while incarcerated and when they come out. I was part of a program that has helped me out a lot ever since I became a mom, and it's called Young Mothers United and Young Women Freedom Circle. Please stop investing in jail for our youth and invest in families and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Trinity Rutherford, and I'm speaking for general public comment and item two. I'm a system-impacted youth who has personally experienced the injustice of juvenile detention centers. Today, I stand here as a free woman, an individual, and as a proud member of the Young Women's Freedom Center. I am a voice for those who cannot speak, a force for change and growth within our community. I'm here to remind the Board of Supervisors to fulfill their promise they made back in 2021, to support and decarcerate the children you promised, the young gender expansive youth also. We must prioritize young women who are still incarcerated under the horrible conditions, conditions that they are forced to be around day in and day out. These are young people, not hardened criminals. They are children. They are family. Our fight is for health, freedom, and justice, not for exploitation. These youth, like what? No. It's time to end this exploitation and focus on the real solutions and respect their dignity as a human being. And I'm done. Thank you.
Next, we're going back to speakers on the phone. Moderator, please go ahead.
Thank you. We'll go to Dominique Warren. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. Mr. Warren? Mr. Warren, your line is open.
Go ahead, Mr. Warren. Hello? Anyone there? Can we have the next speaker, please? Next speaker.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Drew Planting. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. And Mr. Planting took himself out of queue.
Okay, go on to the next one.
Judith Elizabeth, your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. And Mr. Planting took himself out of queue.
Okay, go on to the next one.
Judith Elizabeth, your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much. My name is Judith Elizabeth, and my husband and I live in Downey, California. I, I am just so glad to have this opportunity to address the LA-
Thank you. Next, we're going back to speakers on the phone. Moderator, please go ahead.
Thank you. We'll go to Dominique Warren. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. Mr. Warren? Mr. Warren, your line is open.
Go ahead, Mr. Warren. Hello? Anyone there? Can we have the next speaker, please? Next speaker.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Drew Planting. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. And Mr. Planting took himself out of queue.
Okay, go on to the next one.
Judith Elizabeth, your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much. My name is Judith Elizabeth, and my husband and I live in Downey, California. I am just so glad to have this opportunity to address the L.A. County Board of Supervisors. My family and I strongly oppose agenda item number 35 and the general comment to please not pass a 3% rent increase cap in L.A. County. We are children of immigrants who decided to live a life according to the American dream. Our parents told us to work hard for what we have, get an education. And growing up, we all lived in apartments. And my parents thankfully saved enough money, and they started purchasing their rental properties. And so, we've all made sacrifices to become housing providers and are ethical and responsible housing providers that take pride in serving our low-income tenants within our community. Some of the organizations that we have partnered with include housing authorities like L.A. County, which, by the way, we received several thousands of dollars from tenants who had a very difficult time paying their rent during the pandemic. We believe in open communication with our tenants. I understand they struggled, and we worked with them, and thankfully, they were able to fund and pay for their rent. We also work with Housing Authority of City of Long Beach and Norwalk Housing Authority and other nonprofit organizations such as People Assisting the Homeless, Salvation Army, and Brilliant Corners, Whole Tubs, and Rapid Rehousing. Please recall also that the entire state of California has rent control, and they offer sufficient protection to renters, especially--
Your time has expired.
--with AB 1482.
Megan Edner, your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, can you hear?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Hi, I'm a small landlord with one property in the unincorporated area of L.A. County. I have five units. I am speaking for general public comment and item 35. I am asking the board not to go through with this 60% of CPI rent cap. The report that was used is severely flawed. As was mentioned previously, that report assumed that we were receiving a sufficient return, and that's just factually inaccurate since we just came off of multiple years of a rent freeze when we absorbed all of the cost of inflation with rent freeze for three to four years, when we also did not collect rent from our tenants who were not able to pay. Our cost for insurance, mine personally, has gone up over 200%. I'm facing cancellation right now. My mortgage payment reset, it went up $2,500 with the interest rate. That's not being factored in. This 60% of CPI is just simply not enough to keep us in business. And you are driving people out of business. You are pushing housing away from this county. I cannot emphasize this enough. We need more housing. You are scaring away builders, people who are going to invest in what we need here to solve our housing crisis. This board of supervisors is making the wrong decision today. Find a middle ground. Find something that works. Find out what the real costs are. Come back and look at a balanced report. But don't do something that's just going to drive everyone out of business.
Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next is Jay Branigan. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Chase Branigan. My name is Chase Branigan, and I'm speaking against item 35, the proposed rent increase cap. This policy, while intentioned, will have unintended consequences that will harm both property owners and tenants. By capping rent increases so strictly, the county risks discouraging investment in much-needed housing, further aggravating the housing crisis. We've seen this happen in New York City, where strict rent stabilization laws have led to thousands of rent-stabilized units being kept vacant. According to the U.S. Census, New York's apartment vacancy rate is a record low of 1.4%, but tens of thousands of rent-stabilized apartments are vacant but unavailable for rent. In 2023, about 26,000 rent-stabilized units were kept off the market because landlords could not afford to make substantial repairs needed due to limitations imposed by rent regulation law. These laws cap to return landlords can receive on-renovation investments, making it economically unfeasible to bring units back to rentable condition.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Next is Kitty Wallace. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, my name's Kitty Wallace. I'm born and raised in California. I've been in the real estate business for 25 years, and I am strongly opposing Prop 35. I've spent 25-plus years of my life dedicated to providing housing and jobs for people in the state of California, a place where I'm very passionate about living, and rent control just does not work. State of California is very expensive for people to live in. State of California wanted to enact rent control. They went to USC, UCLA, Cal Berkeley, and chatted with those people and said, "Hey, economists, what do we need to do to help our housing? We want to enact rent control." And they came up with CPI plus 5%. And who did we talk to in the county supervisors? Did we ask anybody, "What is this decision?" Because 0.6% of CPI is flat. That's basically flat rents. When the cost to own these things--
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Next, we will go to Melanie Nutting. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi, I'm a Los Angeles resident, renter, and daughter of small real estate owners. I strongly oppose item 35. This cap doesn't consider the rising costs property owners face, like doubling insurance rates, taxes, maintenance expenses. It makes it financially impossible to maintain these properties or build new properties, which will ironically lead to higher rent prices through increased competition. And as a renter, just two years out of college, I pay market rent at 2022 rates while earning entry-level wages. And I've met long-term renters paying half my rent due to rent control despite earning mid-six-figure salaries, and some even bragging about using their Santa Monica units as beach houses when they have another. So the system is unfair. Frustrating to see those who can afford higher rent prices paying less. Alternatively, we should focus on targeted assistance programs like housing vouchers, supporting new construction through incentives for landlords--
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alex N. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. Ms. Nutting, your line is open. Next, we'll go to the line of Diane Robertson. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I want to be sure that I can be heard. Yes?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Diane Robertson, and I'm calling to make general public comments. I am the executive producer of the Limerick Park Jazz Festival and a 10-year resident of District 2. I'm deeply committed to making arts and culture accessible to all in our community, and I'd like to thank Supervisor Mitchell for her dedication to affordability, accessibility, and cultural relevance, working alongside the L.A. Phil to ensure the Bowl serves the diverse communities in Los Angeles County. As someone who organizes a free community festival in the district, I witnessed the barriers many residents face in accessing live music and cultural events. For those in South L.A., the Hollywood Bowl, which is a cornerstone of our city's cultural landscape, can feel distant and unattainable, both financially and logistically.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the line of Ivy Gershassav. Your line is open. Please speak directly into the phone. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm calling to oppose item 35. Capping rents is unconstitutional and pushing landlords to become slumlord, unable to keep up with the maintenance necessary to provide safe and habitable units in the much-needed housing market. Property owners are entering foreclosure or forced to sell due to low rent, city-mandated retrofits, increased property taxes, and the inability to collect market rent with rent caps. Landlords are still undergoing incredible hardships from the loss of rent during COVID, when the city allowed tenants to live rent-free with no recourse for landlords, and we will never be able to recover or collect those 18 months-plus of rent that the city gifted to tenants on the landlord's behalf. This doesn't even account for legal fees to then evict those non-paying tenants. How do you expect landlords to properly maintain buildings if rent cannot be properly increased to justify the expenses?
Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the line of Drew Planting. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Drew Planting, and I'm a property owner and lifelong Los Angeles resident. And I'm speaking with respect to item 35. The policy will actually worsen the housing crisis in Los Angeles by discouraging investment and making it harder for property owners to maintain quality housing. Rising costs, such as debt, insurance, repairs-- excuse me-- will only mean that the cap will make it nearly impossible to break even, let alone invest in property improvements. Los Angeles needs policies that encourage development, not measures that make it harder to sustain and grow housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. That was our last virtual public speaker, so we'll close virtual public comment and continue with in-person comment. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Maura Greer with Arts for Healing and Justice Network. I'm here to speak on item number two and public comment. I want to start by saying, "Free the 50 and gender expansive youth." As a young woman, I feel and hurt for those separated from their babies waiting to come home. Free the 50 suffering from mental illness due to being locked in a cage and stripped from their identity. Most probation officers don't even want to come to work. Stop the cap. I demand BOS to reject probation's plan to come into compliance at LP by December 12. Take away their jobs. They don't want it. Give these young people to a community that cares. Give these young people a chance to be young and live. I myself have gotten mental health resources, job resources at Arts for Healing and Justice Network and more. I received love, not just for me, but for my baby. I want those mom, those young people inside to get the same help I received. Free the 50 girls and gender expansive youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, muy buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Irma Cervantes, y soy miembro de Inner City Struggles.
Hello, good morning, everyone. My name is Irma Cervantes, and I am a member of Inner City Struggles.
Estoy aquí para dar comentario público general apoyando los artículos 35 y 65.
I am here to provide general public comment and support articles 35 and 65.
Pedimos a la junta de supervisores aprobar el borrador de la ordenanza del DCBA, que modifica la fórmula del aumento de renta en el RSTPO.
And we are here to ask the supervisors to approve the draft of ordinance DCBA that will modify the formula for the RSTPO.
Lo que ayudará a mantener las rentas asequibles para inquilinos de bajos ingresos.
Which will allow to have accessible rent for those renters that are from low-income families.
En el condado no incorporado.
In the non-incorporated counties.
Gracias a la supervisora, Michelle, por presentar las enmiendas.
Thank you to Supervisor Mitchell for presenting the amendments.
Keep L.A. House apoya la adopción por la parte del condado de una fórmula que se basa en el 60% del IPC.
Keep L.A. House supports the adoption of this formula that is also being based on the 60% IPC.
Con un límite del 3%, pero seguimos preocupados por la inclusión del aumento.
But with also the support of that limit of 3%, but we're still very concerned with the increments of the increases of rent.
adicionales en la ordenanza para los propietarios pequeños.
And additionally, in this ordinance for the small business owners.
A mí como rentera, me están cobrando 150 dólares extras por tener a mi sobrina.
As a renter, right now, I'm being charged $150 extra to have my niece.
Y si va mi nieta solamente a visitarme, son 100 dólares extras.
And if my granddaddy just comes and visits me, it's $100 extra.
Y así sucesivamente por cada persona que me visite.
And simultaneously, just like that, for each person that comes and visits me.
Y esto impacta negativamente mi bolsillo.
And this impacts my pocket negatively.
Por eso les pido que pasen el control de renta, por favor. Muchas gracias.
This is why I ask that you approve rent control, please, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hola, mi nombre es Alicia Godinez Rodriguez, miembro y líder comunitario de varias organizaciones de Keep L.A. House.
Hello, my name is Alicia Godinez Rodriguez. I am a member of various organizations and also Keep L.A. House.
Vivo en el este de Los Ángeles, en un área no incorporada al control de renta por 32 años.
I live in East L.A. in a non-incorporated area without rent control for 32 years.
Estoy aquí para dar el comentario público y también para hablar de los artículos 35 y 65.
I am here to give public comment and also to speak on 35 and 65.
Sabemos que el control de renta que nos están cobrando cada año a nosotros pues ya es motivo de estresarse.
We do know that the rent control that they're charging us yearly, this is a motive to be stressed out.
Somos personas que ya estamos a punto de retirarnos, y para nosotros el futuro va a ser un poco más incierto.
We are people that are soon to be retired, and so our future is a little inconsistent.
Ya que los dueños de la casa o el departamento pues a veces nomás nos piden que les ocupemos la casa, pero nosotros conocemos nuestros derechos.
Now, the owners of the house or the apartment, they ask us to leave the house, but we do know our rights as renters.
Para ellos es muy fácil decirnos, "Desalojen la casa y váyanse", pero nosotros decimos que no porque nosotros tenemos que salirnos con la frente bien en alto de que se nos debe reubicar y dar el dinero que corresponde.
They can tell us, "Leave," just like so, but we say no because we do know that we walk with our heads high, and they also have to pay for us to be relocated and give us time.
Gracias a la supervisora, Michelle, por presentar las enmiendas de Keep L.A. House que apoya la adopción por parte del condado de una fórmula que se basa en el 60%.
And thank you to Supervisor Mitchell for presenting the formulas of Keep L.A. House and the amendments that will also be based on a 60% of IPC.
Como límite del 3%, pero seguimos preocupados por esta ordenanza para los propietarios pequeños.
With a limit of 3%, but we continue to be worried about this ordinance for all of those small business owners.
Ya que nosotros somos personas mayores, pues no queremos más familias en la calle debido a la alta inflación.
Now that we are elderly, we don't want any more family members in the streets due to the inflation.
Pongan atención a esto, verdad? Porque es muy importante para estas familias que nosotros queremos un control de renta en el condado de Los Ángeles. Muchas gracias.
Please pay attention to this. We are part of the family here in Los Angeles County, and we do like rent control for many of our families and renters. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'd like to speak on item two and general public comment. Hello, my name is Emily Zamora. I'm a youth organizer and policy associate with YJC and a constituent of District Two. I'm here the day after elections with our village, continuing to push for our demands to free our girls and gender expansive youth and to fully fund Youth Justice Reimagined, because we have no trust in elected officials and we have no trust in you. Time and time again, this board chooses to pass performative motions or use movement language to throw a bone and shut us up, but do nothing about the living conditions of our youth inside of the halls you all continue to throw millions at. In November of 2021, this board passed a motion to decarcerate girls and gender expansive youth. We are in November of 2024, and our youth are still behind bars in horrific conditions, no sight of mental health resources, no programming, being forced into fights, and having their bodily autonomy violated by probation officers. These conditions don't strike fear into you? No pain in you? No humanity in you? These are kids who need their families and communities, who need care, love, mental health resources, housing, job opportunities, education, not to be locked up in cages like animals. I urge this board to use your power and declare a state of emergency. Half of L.A. County's incarcerated youth population are caged in an unsuitable facility. From January to June, there were a total of 800 use-of-force incidents in LP and ongoing cycles of unsuitability within these halls that could not stay open for the life of them. Does that sound like -- does that not sound like an emergency to you? Because it sounds like an emergency to all of us. If it was your child in these facilities being abused, raped, beaten by probation officers, you'd find who's responsible and you'd raise hell. Uphold your promise in 2021. Free our --
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Alejandro Gomez, and I'm here to speak on item two and public comment. My name's Alejandro Gomez. I work with Youth Justice Coalition as a coordinator assistant, and I'm here to speak and to stand up for and to advocate for the youth such as myself. I've been indirectly impacted by youth incarceration. The Board of Supervisors is spending $800,000 per year to incarcerate the youth. The Board of Supervisors has also approved $117 million to reopen Los Pedrinos, and that was a mistake, because the incident that occurred with Brian Diaz was on your hands, and that's a question I ask myself. Is that the best you can do? You have youth overdosing and suffering inside those cells. $1.5 to $3 billion is being spent for the claims alleging sexual abuse at county facilities and other locations. Now, where is that money going, other than caging youth? Now, ask yourself, what if it was your young son, or brother, or sister, any family that has been or that is going to be incarcerated? I promise you, you would do the same as us, standing before you and taking a stand for those youth who can't. Now, with Prop 36, the youth will be severely impacted by this passing, and we are done putting up with this injustice. Now, while you ignore our demands, expecting the youth to follow laws and be a good citizen, there are youth that don't have a choice for their actions. That's the one thing most people, including you, Board of Supervisors, don't know. We need to be heard and seen and embraced. We need more money invested in youth centers like Youth Justice Coalition and Free the 50 Young Girls. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'd like to comment on item 35, item 65, and general public comment. Hello, my name is Shane Henson. I'm a public policy advocate and staff attorney with Inner City Law Center. I'm also a member of the Keep L.A. House Coalition, or Inner City Law Center is a member. Today, we urge the board to pass the draft ordinance from the DCBA amending the rent increase formula and the RSTPO, which will keep rents affordable for low-income tenants in an unincorporated L.A. County. Thank you to Supervisor Mitchell for putting forth these amendments. Keep L.A. House supports the county's adoption of a formula that is based on 60% CPI and has a 3% cap. We've heard comment earlier today that this 3% cap is radical. In fact, that's not the case. And in fact, instead, it'll bring the county in line with other rent-controlled regimes throughout Southern California, including West Hollywood, Santa Monica, and Cudahoula. But we continue to be concerned about the ordinance's inclusion of additional increases for small landlords. A low-income tenant should not get a higher rent increase simply because their landlord is a small landlord. Rather than allow rent extra increases for small landlords, the county should create programs like mortgage and property maintenance support programs for truly struggling mom-and-pops. In addition, when the ordinance is implemented, the self-certification process for small property owners needs to be as thorough as possible. Whether in the ordinance or guidelines, potential small property owners should have to affirmatively indicate that they meet each part of the definition of small property owner in the draft ordinance. Finally, on a personal note, I'd like to say that I've worked as a legal aid attorney in L.A. County for over three years now. My clients have had numerous and varied issues. Some have faced eviction, others thousands of dollars in parking tickets and fees, others were denied their public benefits. However, so many of them shared the same fundamental issue, that the rent was simply too high. The proposed ordinance drafted by the DCBA to amend the RSTPO will help people like my clients pay a fair amount on their rent and remain safely in their homes. Members of the board, thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes a los presentes. Mi nombre es Norma Castillo.
Good afternoon to those present. My name is Norma Castillo.
La razón por la que estoy acá es en representación de todas aquellas personas quienes no están presentes o no pudieron presentarse.
The reason I'm here is to represent all those people that were not able to be here or to come and be in attendance.
Con la proposición 35 respecto al incremento de la renta, estoy completamente en desacuerdo y quisiera que esa proposición no pasara, que nos ayudaran a poder controlar el incremento de las rentas.
With item 35, I'm in disagreement for that to be approved. I would like to have rent control and for you to assist us with rent control.
Lo cual los incrementos de la renta están subiendo más nuestros ingresos, nuestros sueldos siguen en un limbo donde no podemos controlar cuánto es que nosotros recibimos.
Rent goes up, yet our wages are in a limbo, and so we really can't come to see what we can, cannot afford.
Y nosotros, no solamente nuestras familias, sino nuestros hijos, el futuro son los que van a tener efecto, van a estar sufriendo los efectos de estos incrementos en el futuro.
And not just our families, our children will be also suffering these increases in the future.
Y quisiera que en este momento se tomaran en cuenta nuestras voces, porque deseamos que mantenernos en nuestros hogares sin el temor de que tengamos que ser desalojados de una o de otra manera.
And we would like for you to listen to our voices, so that we aren't having to fear being not able to stay in our homes. We would like to stay in our homes. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hey, I would like to speak on public comment and agenda two, agenda item two. So, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Nice to see y'all. My name is Jacob Jackson with the Youth Justice Coalition. I'm the UOLWe supporter, and I live in the second district. First and foremost, would like to thank Holly Mitchell for supporting Yes on Prop 6. Today, I'm demanding that you reinvest the $410 million of probation budget to Youth Justice Reimagine, Housing, Yes Team, Youth Centers, Peace Builders, Credible Messengers, and Youth Jobs. We deserve the full funding amount to actually support our youth. Also, Los Pedrinos has experienced 572 physical force and 228 OC spray incidents in this year alone, totaling 800 use-of-force incidents, despite there only being 300 youth at Los Pedrinos. We should be prioritizing care first and jail last. It's almost been a year since Brian Diaz has died inside the juvenile hall that BOS continues to fund and fail our youth. Also, want to give a testimony for one of the young people in LP. He said, "Honestly, before I came to LP, I was incarcerated, but LP messed up my mental state really bad." To start off, I understand that I must face the consequences of my action, but being in LP made me into a version of myself I never knew I would come out. My first problem, feces are coming out the drain, and nobody is doing anything. Second, one of my best friends was taken to MCs for an altercation that he was not involved in. Third, I seen one of the homies drink cleaning solution and almost fainted in my arms. He was shakier, and it hurt to see him like that. And so then I also wanted to say, before I end, I had another one, but there's no need to reopen LP. It's been found out of compliance dozens of times, even the BSCC deemed it unsuitable for youth, and it's not actually prioritizing youth mental, physical health, well-being, and they're going in traumatizing, coming out unstable. Today, I'm demanding that you reinvest $410 million of probation --
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Emilio with the Youth Justice Coalition. I'm speaking on agenda item two and general public comment. I gave my two minutes. Thank you. Los Pedrinos Juvenile Hall has yet again been found unsuitable by the BSCC. We urge the board to reject probation's plan to come back into compliance while young people are being abused inside. We urge the board to declare a state of emergency and begin decarcerating youth immediately. An estimated $1.6 to $3 billion will be spent for the thousands of potential claims alleging child sexual abuse at county facilities and other locations. In November of 2021, you all passed a motion to decarcerate girls and gender expansive youth. What's up? What happened? Where are we at? We haven't heard anything. We've been doing this back and forth, trying to close probation halls literally for years now, and we understand that there's a general concern by the board as to what the alternatives look like. After Together We Passed Landmark Legislation or Motion, Youth Justice Reimagine, we spent over two years working through YJR workgroups to build community-based solutions together, and we also opened the first-ever L.A. County Department of Youth Development in 2022. We're growing care-first services around Yes Teams, housing, legal support, drug rehab, peace building, transformative justice, and more. YJC and our partners literally shut down Canyon Juvenile Courthouse and turned it into Chico's Justice Center in the heart of South Central. We have seen that the alternatives are possible because we're building it and living it every single day. We have been ready for years to move this funding back to our community, and you continue to spend $800,000 a year to lock up one young person. How many more disgusting stories about the dehumanizing conditions inside halls need to come to light before you make changes with us? We're ready. Where are you at?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Justin Marks. I'm speaking on agenda items two, nine, and general public comment. As an L.A. County resident, I'm calling for immediate divestment, not only from probation, but also the Sheriff's Department. L.A. County is funding the largest youth sex abuse scandal since the Catholic Church. Not only the money that you use to incarcerate young people, but as the last speaker also pointed out, the millions of dollars that you spend in lawsuits and settlements is being wasted. Meanwhile, alternatives are present. After last night, it's now more than ever that we need the Supervisors Han, Solis, Horvath, Barker, and Mitchell to pass a motion to move the JJRBG money away from probation and towards the Department of Youth Development so that we can fully fund Yes Teams, that we can fully fund Safe Healing Centers, that we can fully fund Youth Justice Reimagine. The work is there. We need your conviction. We need your commitment. We need your action. Young people are worth it. And now, more than ever, with Tiny Trump being elected to district attorney, young people are even more vulnerable with the passing of Proposition 36. Young people are even more vulnerable to being locked up. We need you to take action now. Declare a state of emergency. Free the 50 girls. The number of 50 is down. It's smaller than that. The time is now to act, especially as these changes that we saw last night come into effect. Move the money. Right now, the Board of State and Community Corrections declared the halls unsuitable again, but yet, as the speaker pointed out earlier, where is Vera? Where is the chief of the probation office? Why isn't this on the agenda? How many more Brian Diaz are we going to have? How many more young girls assaulted by officers? How many more gladiator fights? How many more kids are we going to hear about trying to take bleach and other cleaning solutions in order to get help? Why are we severing these families? There's parents who can do a lot more with $800,000 than what probation is doing. Currently, if parents were providing the conditions that the halls and camps are providing to young people, DCFS would be snatching those kids away. So why aren't you all snatching those kids away from probation? It's unacceptable. The alternatives are here in L.A. County already. We need you to move. We need you to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Sarah Quipman. I work in the District Two. I'm here on the behalf of Youth Justice Coalition. We demand that the Board of Supervisors declare a state of emergency to immediately release all girls and gender expansive youth, expansive youth, I'm sorry, inside L.A. County juvenile halls. The board made this act during COVID, so we know y'all have the power to do it again and decarcerate youth promptly. We demand that the Board of Supervisors make sure that there's no capping y'all rap by rejecting probation's plan to come back into compliance at Los Pedrinos by December 12, 2024. Due to the short time to speak, our final demand is for the Board of Supervisors to reinvest their $410 million of probation's budget to Youth Justice Reimagine, Housing for Youth, Yes Teams, Youth Centers like Chico's Justice Center, Peace Builders, Youth Jobs, and Credible Messengers. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm speaking on items 35 and 65. Good afternoon. My name is Victor Velasco, and I'm an eviction defense paralegal at Public Counsel, one of several organizations in the Keep L.A. House Coalition. I am here today to urge the board to vote in favor of items 35 and 65 and pass the draft ordinance from DCBA amending the rent increase formula in the RSTPO. Keep L.A. House supports the county's adoption of a formula that is based on 60% CPI with a 3% cap. This change will help keep rent affordable for low-income tenants in unincorporated L.A. and provide relief to hundreds of your constituents who have to make the difficult decision every month between paying for rent or other basic needs like food, healthcare, childcare. However, I also want to express concern about the ordinance's inclusion that will give small landlords the privilege to raise rent by an additional 1%. Tenants should not be vulnerable to higher rent increases simply because their landlord is a mom-and-pop landlord. Instead, the county should create mortgage and property maintenance support programs for struggling owners. I want to say thank you to Supervisor Mitchell for your leadership on this, and I urge everyone to vote in favor of items 35 and 65. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Hines. I am the Youth Development Coordinator at Youth Justice Coalition, and I am a constituent in District Two. I am here to demand that you declare a state of emergency and free the 50 girls. Youth development is my expertise with more than seven years in the field, so I feel confident in saying that the board is not supporting youth in Los Angeles County. We constantly hear from community that investing in police is not working, and we need to invest in what the youth keep saying they need. We keep hearing youth centers, jobs, housing, mental health resources, but the board keeps spending millions of dollars in criminalizing youth, not investing in the things that will help them. I have had countless success stories with youth who I work with that would be called so-called lost causes, but when I work with them and provide the necessary resources, they are able to thrive and independently navigate life, being positive members of society. I am here to demand that you divest $410 million from probation --
Thank you. If there's more you'd like to share with us that's written, you can give it to our staff. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Danielle Lafayette. I'm giving public comment and speaking on item number two. So yes, my name is Danielle Lafayette. I'm the founder and executive director of Unite a Nation. I'm also a member of the Reimagine L.A. Coalition. I'm a resident and native of South Los Angeles, and I'm also a mother. I am here to speak on freeing the youth from incarceration, also for our elected officials to consider funding small, community-based organizations that are from the community that have lived experience and creating access to those organizations to be fully funded. I feel that sometimes the funding is given to organizations who may not have direct access to our youth or have a good understanding of our youth that we serve. And so, for me, I have been able to successfully help youth get living wage employment, have employment with elected officials, have employment with large nonprofit organizations, have access, graduation from college and high school. And I think it's very important, because I'm a resident of South Los Angeles, I was born in South Los Angeles, I'm also raising my children in South Los Angeles, I think it's very important to fund organizations like mine, give full funding to organizations that are in the community, and make sure that we can continue to provide the services to our children, to our youth who are in our communities. And that's very, very important, because if we can fund incarceration systems fully, then we should be able to fund community-based organizations fully. then we should be able to fund community-based organizations fully as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Oh, her mic's not on. Okay, there you go.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Dariana. I am a fellow of the Youth Justice Coalition. I am here to talk about immediate release of girls and gender expansive youth inside of L.A. County juvenile halls. The daily population for justice involved, youth in out-of-home placement, is now lowest it has ever been in over 20 years. However, the rate decreases for girls is 5% lower than boys. Nation trends shows that black girl comprie highs 40% of general population and get 3% more than 32% of those in out-of-home placements. The root causes behavior that bring girls to attention of law enforcement include trauma such as physical, emotional, and sexual abuse. 64% of girls involved in juvenile justice system have experienced some of those abuse. A few facilities provided mental and physical health service for girls, especially as the needs relates to trauma. All of these girls undo what you said you would do in November 2021.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Zee, and I'm a student with YJC. Today, I'm here to demand investing $410 million of probation's budget into youth justice. Formerly incarcerated women have much higher rates of unemployment and homelessness compared to men. Also, women who can't secure housing may return to abusive partners or family situations for toxic reasons. Along with YES teams that support young people, they'd always have someone to support them. Youth centers like YJC that have created a safe place to get away from stuff that may be affecting us mentally or physically is also something they should consider reinvesting into the budget. Peacebuilders are also important for our safety instead of cops hurting us and locking us up in cages. Peacebuilders find better solutions to fix the situation. Lastly, youth jobs help us at home or simply just things to do to get out the house and earn money. I'm here echoing any and every young person's needs that was not on this ballot. Free the 50 girls and gender expansive youth like you said you would in November 2021. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Zoe Rossin, Item 2, 9, and General Public Comment. These items are about whether you can stand up, you as the Board of L.A. County can stand up for the dignity of the people. We're here to demand that you free the 50 from abusive and deplorable probation conditions. You're aware of them. Some of you have seen them. They're deplorable. I know you have compassion for it, but it has to change. Your action has to change. So I'm asking you to experience this as if it's the first time you're hearing it, that generations of young women have been sexually abused in the custody of L.A. County in locked facilities. So I'm asking you to take time today to experience that. Feel the outrage and feel the compassion, because that's what gets us up here. That's what gets us here. We do that every day, and you will need to do that every day in order to make change, in order to take action that's different than what you have done before. Okay? So the community is doing something that's different, and I can offer you, from our collective community, five highly experienced youth justice, youth development practitioners with a background in trauma recovery that can lead care coordination for every one of those young women inside. Probation cannot do this. Stop asking them to do it. We can do it, and we will collaborate with you, and we will collaborate with DYD. My name is Zoe Rossin. I'm with Liberation Fund. Declare a state of emergency. Move the money, but access community resource in a different way. We're here. Each young person that is here can name, I know this because I've been in this field for a long time, they can name three to five people that are part of their circle of care, community practitioners. That's why they're here. I've known Maura for six years. She said, "Love keeps me here." And not only do the organizations in the community love me, but when I had my baby, they loved my baby. It is a very different approach, and it is so disturbing, and I imagine you're disturbed too, by what this country tolerates. We cannot tolerate it here, supposedly one of the only safe places to live. It's not safe for these young people. Please access us. We're here.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Hi. My name is Amari Wallace. I'm a youth fellow. I'm with Youth Justice Coalition. I'm here to demand the BOS invest into youth in non-prisons and to free the 50 girls and gender expansive youth and to reinvest $400 million into probation budgets to Youth Justice Reimagine and housing, YES teams, youth centers, peacebuilders, credible messengers, and youth jobs. I will also invest in spaces like Chico's Justice Center, who help youth get out of incarceration and help youth get a diploma. My school teaches about real history, and they teach me the power of community. When we fight, we win. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Abraham Savala. I'm with the Reimagine Child Safety Coalition. I'm a parent with lived experience, and I've seen how these systems play out. I'm here to demand the immediate release of our 50 girls and gender expansive youth. Also, here on behalf of Western Center on Law and Poverty to ask the Board to take action. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, yes. I'm Navontra Farmer. I want to thank you guys for having me. I'm here to speak on behalf of the youth in the community, as far as Los Angeles County, but me growing up, going through the halls, justice system, period, is foul, and we need more resources. The only resources I can really think of that ever helped me in my life is YJC Chico's Justice Center, and we've been pushing this for years and years and years on top of y'all, saying y'all gonna help, saying y'all gonna do this, but then it's like the same stuff. And I'm a living dying breed right here in front of y'all, saying the halls messed me up. That's where I messed up. Me going to jail for something I didn't do, 13 years old, and from there went down the hall, downhill, prison, everything. So I'm just saying, we need more resources like YJC. They actually have classes, after-school program, in-school.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. I am speaking on Agenda Items Number 6, Number 9, 13, 10, and Public Comment. Okay, before I begin, can I make sure that I have the right amount of time, please?
Three minutes, yes.
For all of those Agenda Items? On October 30th, 2024, I submitted both my phone number and my email address and would like an immediate response. Per the Freedom of Information Act, I am requesting all bond information regarding today's Agenda Items, as well all insurance and bond information for government employees who have taken oaths, including but not limited to the California Bar Association members, the largest legal firms operating this unconstitutional slavery system, the governor, the mayor, the judges, and the members of the Board of Supervisors, with all rights being reserved to amend this request to include any and or all others that I see fit. Okay? This information contained in this book and this green pamphlet is not informative enough, and I am requesting complete transparency. I need to know all of the consequences associated with these Agenda Items before I can agree with them. My mother was a lifelong addict, one who lived at Martin Luther King Recuporative Care Center to later be transitioned to a welfare-exempt housing subsidy in Long Beach. My mother died in that housing subsidy with no responsibilities and/or training in substance use disorder given to the case manager, apartment manager, residence, or any other IHSS workers, who are all mandated reporters, with the exception of maybe the residents. There is no accountability to the family members. When not one but two elders die within a 30-day timeframe, seemingly these folks are indemnified by some type of hold harmless indemnity bond agreement. Again, I need these bond numbers and insurance information. The two deceased elders I'm referring to have suffered through the revolving door of foster care juvenile facilities as youth, much in the same manner as well as inadequately-trained DPSs staff, in much the same manner as being addressed by these children here today. Secondly, my son fell victim to Southern California Foster Family Agency, has been suffering for reasons unbeknownst to him since he was born, and he was stolen from me at the hospital. For 15 years, he's had to deal with the emotional trauma of not being able to connect with his family, and he's currently being held in a behavioral therapeutic treatment facility in Utah, where the county is paying $12,000 a month, $144,000, to keep him away from his family. And you think this is okay? It's not. I have additional information that I will be submitting, and I would like a response. Phone, call, or email. I have videos, I have pictures and everything, and I need to get some answers. I submitted documents last week, and I have so much more to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have two more speakers on the phone. Moderator, please go ahead.
Thank you. Our first participant is Matthew Buck. Please go ahead. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. Matt Buck, Vice President of Public Affairs for the California Apartment Association. The results of Proposition 33 in yesterday's election made it clear that L.A. County residents do not support rent control policies. They know that strict eviction and rent control policies have failed to increase affordability. These policies simply make it too hard for ethical housing providers to stay in business, and the most affordable housing options begin to vanish from the community. Your own report acknowledges that a 3% cap creates a higher mismatch between changes in operating costs and rents and poses a risk to property owners. We humbly urge the Board to reconsider this rent formula, as it will make housing more expensive and harder to find and therefore hurt the vulnerable families you are trying to help. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next is Russell Gold. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hello. Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to speak on Item 35, and I'm General Public Comment. I'm a small housing developer and a small landlord housing provider. I urge you to oppose Item 35. A rent cap at 60% of CPI is extreme and draconian and will destroy new housing development and push existing properties into disrepair. This will ultimately cause rents to rise, as there will not be enough housing production in the county. People such as myself cannot afford to develop new housing if, in the long run, the properties that we develop cannot earn the rents that rise with operating costs and inflation. Otherwise, why would we take the significant business risks without the ability to recover costs over time? With less housing production, there will be less housing available to rent, and therefore rents will go up overall in the long run. And existing apartment owners cannot afford to maintain apartments as costs rise, leading to slums. In the long run, this will create a big problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people in the county. If you pass this, you will be responsible for raising housing costs for all in the long run. I urge you to oppose Item 35. If there are caps on rent, it needs to be in line with CPI or above CPI, but the 60% limit below, the 60% of CPI is just draconian and will cause big, big problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam, Mr. Chair, there are no other participants queued up.
Thank you for that. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that we're under critical fire weather alert right now. While we've been in this meeting, our L.A. County Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, and Emergency Operations Center have been deploying resources to contain the broad fire in Malibu at PCH and Malibu Canyon Road. I'm glad to report the fire has been contained. Two structures were damaged, and one was completely destroyed. We extend prayers to those homeowners and to everyone in the Malibu community and in the vicinity of the fires. Our neighbors in Ventura County are fighting their own wildfire, and we're holding them close to right now. Please, please, to everyone listening, proceed with caution. We remain under what the National Weather Service calls a particularly dangerous situation through tomorrow. This is serious, and we need our communities to be prepared, to stay informed, and to stay safe. And I want to thank our county emergency personnel for putting your lives on the line to keep our communities protected. I also want to thank everyone who came out to speak today. I found the testimony incredibly moving. With that, that concludes our time for public comment today. Executive Officer, please indicate the Agenda Item numbers on which we will be voting.
The following items are before you: 1 through 4, 6 through 8, 11 and 12, 14 through 21, 22 as revised, 23 and 24, 26 through 34, 35 with Supervisor voting no, 36, 37 with Supervisor Horvath recusing herself from the vote pursuant to Government Code Section 84308, 38 through 49, 50 with Supervisor Mitchell abstaining from the vote, 51 and 52, 54 through 59, 68 and 6B, 63 through 64, 65 with Supervisor Barker voting no, 66 with Supervisor Mitchell abstaining from the vote, 67, 1P through 3P. These items are before you.
Moved by Supervisor Han, seconded by Supervisor Solis. To approve these items, with the exceptions noted by the executive officer, executive officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries 5 to 0.
At this time, it would be appropriate to hear adjournments. Supervisor Han will begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of both Jack and Ida Zarunian, who many of you know their son Frank Zarunian from Rolling Hills Estates, who's city council member. He was also, I think he's a professor at USC, and both of his parents passed away months apart after a long and happy life together. Jack and Ida are survived by their son Frank, four grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and I know Frank is feeling the loss. Okay, thank you.
Can I be on that as well?
All right. We have a few that are joining. Thank you very much. That's all, Madam.
Okay, Supervisor Barker.
Thank you. I move that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of longtime Antelope Valley resident Marcia Abate, passed away at the age of 82 on October 13th in a traffic accident in Oregon. Born July 23rd, 1942, in Dayton, Ohio, Marcia earned her bachelor's degree and master's degrees from Ohio State University. After marrying Salvatore Abate, on November 23rd, 1968, she settled in Palmdale, where Marcia contributed to the arts, community, and the church for more than 50 years. In 1981, she was founder of the Desert Song Choir at St. Junipedo Catholic Church in Quartz Hill. For 18 years, she performed with the Antelope Valley's Nuns for Funds singing group as Sister Mary Moonbeam. Upon retiring as a speech therapist and teacher, Marcia spent much of her time as a portrait charcoal artist. She was a member of the Sierra Club and treasured hiking with friends and family. Marcia survived by her four children, eight grandchildren, 10 great-grandchildren, and a sister. Also, that we adjourn a member of Twila Acosta, longtime resident of Claremont, who passed away at the age of 74. She obtained her undergraduate degree from Mercer College in Atlanta, Georgia. In 1970, she married the love of her life, Nelson. Together with their three sons, they embarked on a journey that took them across the world. They moved abroad to London and Saudi Arabia before settling in Claremont in 1984. For more than 23 years, Twila worked in the case management department of Pomona Valley Hospital Medical Center, where she built lasting friendships and was a respected member of her team. She was actively involved in her children's activities, serving as Cub Scout, den mother, a Little League team mom, and a volunteer at Chaparral Elementary School in Claremont. Her commitment to helping others and enriching her community was evident in everything she did. She will truly be missed. Twila survived by her husband Nelson, her three sons Jeffrey, Stephen, and Brian, and her 10 grandchildren. And that we adjourn in memory of Lieutenant Commander Lindsey Miley Evans. U.S. Navy Lieutenant Commander Lindsey Miley Evans, who grew up in Palmdale, died on October 15th at the age of 31 in a Navy electronic warfare aircraft crashed during a training flight near Mount Rainier, Washington. Lindsey graduated in 2010 from Parkdale High School in Lancaster with honors and a 4.3-point average. Great point. point average, grade point average. She also played on the varsity softball team. Following graduation from the University of Southern California, Lindsay commissioned through the Reserve Officers Training Corps and became a naval flight officer. In 2023, she was part of the first ever all-female Super Bowl flyover, marking 50 years of women flying in the U S Navy. Later that year, she deployed for nine months abroad on aircraft, aircraft carrier USS Dwight D Eisenhower, her second sea tour. From the Eisenhower, she coordinated and took part in combat strikes in Yemen. Lindsay was named the 2023-24 Tactics Instructor of the Year of the EA 18G Growler, the Navy jet in which she flew as an electronic warfare officer. At the time of her death, Lindsay served as Electronic Attack Squadron 130 at Naval Air Base Wybe Island in Washington State. We also, I, we also adjourn in memory of Robert Borjes Rhodes, Sr., longtime resident of South Pasadena who passed away at the age of 84. Robert attended Polytechnic School in Pasadena, Midland School in San Andres Valley, Menlo College in Menlo Park, and Arts Center School of Design in Pasadena. He served in the Marine Corps Reserves and was a poet and a published author of children's books. He survived by his wife of 42 years, Nancy Rhodes, his son, grandson, sisters, and nephews. And last, that we move in, we adjourn in memory of Stephen Zimmer, former resident of Santa Clarita, who passed away at the age of 77. He grew up in several Arizona communities and in El Centro, California. Stephen graduated from U C Berkeley in Hastings School of Law. He then joined the Peace Corps and served in Columbia. He practiced law as a city attorney and counsel in El Centro and as a contract city attorney for Oxnard and several central coastal communities. He provided legal and land development services in San Diego, Ventura, and Santa Clarita. Stephen was dedicated to his community, serving as a member and chair of the Santa Clarita Child and Family Center, College of the Canyons Foundation, and College of the Canyons Board of Trustees. He also served on several professional organizations throughout his 50 years as an attorney. Stephen loved embarking on global adventures with his family. He'll be remembered for his devotion to his family traditions, especially the years spent at the family's beach home in Mission Beach. Stephen leaves an enduring legacy of service integrity and leadership, and he will be deeply missed by all that knew him. He survived by his wife Doris Marie and their children. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Rudy Chavaria. Rudy Chavaria was born on August 12th, 1944. He was a proud alumnus of La Puente High School, Hacienda La Puente Unified School District employee for over 40 years and a board member for eight years. In 2013, in an effort to continue supporting students of the district, he founded the Rudy Chavaria Scholarship Foundation. Rudy sadly passed away on October 29th. He left a lasting mark in the Hacienda La Puente Unified School District community and a legacy that will continue to benefit the students and the staff at the district for many years to come. We will miss him deeply and all that knew him will send, send our prayers. Next, I also move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Stephen Steve Garcia. Steve was born in Los Angeles on September 20th, 1964 into a family of 15 with 10 sisters and two brothers. Steve met his wife Susan in 1986 and they married in 1989. In August of 2005, Steve joined I S D as a utility tractor operator and quickly demonstrated his exceptional skills and dedication. He was promoted to Millwright Journeyman and played a vital role in supporting the department's operations. Steve's contributions were invaluable, particularly during the COVID pandemic. He retired on October 2023 after a full career of more than 18 years with I S D. Steve and his wife Susan raised two beautiful children, Stevie and Alicia. In 2021, Steve and Susan gained a son-in-law. Nick, Alicia, and Nick, and Nick were expecting their first child, Jack, Stephen, and Susan's first grandson this month. Steve defined the true meaning of a family man. He had a special personality that was loving, silly, and compassionate. Steve passed away peacefully on Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, surrounded by his loving wife and family. His infectious smile will continue to live through all the hearts and souls he touched. I think that maybe all members want to be on that one, he was an employee I S D. And then lastly, Madam Chair, finally, I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Fernando Valenzuela, the baseball legend nicknamed El Toro. He was born the youngest of 12 children to a warm working family on November 1st, 1960 in Sonora, Mexico. In 1977, Fernando began his professional baseball career signing with the Mayos del Naiobaja. During his time playing baseball in Mexico, a number of MLB teams scouted Fernando. It was ultimately the Dodgers who were lucky enough to acquire him. He was called up to the major leagues leagues in September of 1980, serving as a reliever. Following his successful stint as a reliever in 1980, Fernando transitioned to a full-time starter role in his 1981 rookie season. He was unexpectedly named the Dodgers' opening day starter, becoming the first rookie to do so. Fernando had one of the best starts to a career in MLB history. Latinos rushed to the Dodger Stadium when he was announced as a starting pitcher. The excitement surrounding Fernando came to be known as Fernando Mania. He became the first player to win the Rookie of the Year Award and the Cy Young Award in the same season. Fernando had a tremendous impact on baseball, not only in Los Angeles, but across this country. He was a cultural phenomenon that gave the Latino community in the United States a role model to root for. I had the honor to meet and encounter Fernando on multiple occasions, including back in 2022 when our board unanimously approved a motion I authored to proclaim July 18th, 2022, as Fernando Valenzuela Day, to thank him personally and recognize him for his service and dedication to the people of Los Angeles County. I was also honored to have Fernando join me in the East Los Angeles Mexican Independence Day Parade in 2022 when he served as the parade's grand marshal. And just last year, I was thrilled to reconnect with him during a celebration of the retirement of his journey number 34 with the L A Dodgers. He made a profound impact on the Major League Baseball, on the lives of Dodger fans in Los Angeles and well beyond. Fernando passed away on October 22nd, 2024 at the tender age of 63. He will be deeply missed by all who knew him, but he will always be remembered as one of the greatest pitchers. Fernando was survived by his wife Linda, his four children, and his seven grandchildren. And now I want to thank Chair Horvath for joining me in the adjournment and turn it over to her for a few words.
Thank you for allowing me to join you. It's difficult to express in words what Fernando Valenzuela meant and will mean forever to Los Angeles and especially to the Latino community. He was a phenom who brought great pride to fans here and around the world. Fernando Mania is not something of the past. It lives on today and I know it, we felt it on Friday as we celebrated the World Series Champions on his birthday with a fantastic parade and celebration at Dodger Stadium. And I do not believe that that is a coincidence and I know he was honored yesterday, or honored earlier today with a funeral at Our Lady of Angels just across the street. I can see it in the new murals that we, that have been crafted thanks to Robert Vargas and in the outpouring of love we've seen over the last week and a half. And so we adjourn in memory of Fernando Valenzuela, knowing that his legacy is woven into the history books of Los Angeles and the hearts of all Angelinos. I think we all should join in that. And I have one more adjournment. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Patrick Ryan Blood, who passed away on October 29th. He was a resident of West Hollywood. He was a cherished member of the West Hollywood community, having served on the LGBTQ plus commission since his appointment by Councilmember John Heilmann in 2023. Prior to his appointment to the LGBTQ plus commission, he served on the Disabilities Advisory Board for many years, including as Chair of the Board in 2021 and 2022. Blood was an entertainment attorney with the Blood Law Group, representing media clients across different entertainment projects, and he was a beloved friend and community member and will be deeply missed. With that, we'll take all motions as seconded. If there's no objection to a unanimous vote, that will be the action and that concludes today's meeting. Our, oh, I think we're, I think we had one more. We can absolutely all adjourn in memory of Quincy Jones, yes. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Quincy Jones, who passed away on Sunday, November 3rd at age 91. He was a resident of Bel Air. Jones was born in Chicago and had an early love for music. After a period of living in different places, his family settled in Seattle, where he attended high school, then university, eventually earning a scholarship to Berkeley College of Music. Jones was quickly composing and arranging music for rising stars, including Ray Charles, whom he knew since they were both teenagers. Jones went from playing music to becoming a music industry executive. At Mercury Records, he was promoted to Vice President, the first executive position at a major U S record company, held by a black person. We know some of Jones's most popular songs and some of his most significant accomplishments, producing the trilogy of albums that made Michael Jackson the most famous singer in the world, winning 28 Grammy Awards, seven Academy Awards, and raising millions of dollars for Ethiopian famine victims by producing the song "We Are the World." Quincy, or as many knew him, Q, was a force and an indisputable legend. Without his influence, music as we know it would be unrecognizable today. In Los Angeles, his foundation sought to encourage arts education and he saw art and music as an important outlet for young kids. His impact is certainly felt here in Los Angeles, in our communities, and it ripples across the globe. He is survived by his seven children, Rashida, Kidada, Quincy, Kenya, Jolie, Martina, and Rachel. And with that, that concludes our meeting today. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at 9:30 a.m. We are adjourned.